So this is the May 10th meeting of the Nantucket zoning board of appeals to continue our deliberations as to the Surfside Crossing 40B hearing, I mean, application. So, as we all know, we started last week, got through some things. Do we have to do anything with the minutes, per se?
They need to be approved.
They need to be approved? Okay.
I read them, I didn't see any.
Any issues? I read them, and so it was fine with them. Yeah? Everybody good with them? All right, well, someone make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion.
Kiram made the motion. Jeff, you want to second that? Jeff, second it? Any further discussion? No? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, where did we leave off last time?
It is.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
We left off, we might as well, one of the things we definitely left off was traffic and how it impacts things. And we all agreed to take a look at the various material we have and come back and discuss that. So why don't we just start with traffic? So, does anybody have anything to start with, or?
I think that the information was completely accurate. I wasn't taking into consideration Richmond, for example. That's not fully built out. But this summer, I think there was a huge change in traffic, and we're going to feel it. I don't think that the study was done in the right timeframe. I know our traffic expert had said otherwise, that things were okay, but you're going into some in your sections that are already D, and, you know, it's getting an F.
Yeah. Do you think, Kiram, that the traffic issue is enough of a silver bullet, if you will, to kill things? Or is it more something that we can condition? Either...
I think that was going to have to be conditioned, and I don't think it's going to be completely a silver bullet.
Could you please make sure you're talking into the mic? I'm sorry.
Yeah, people do watch, believe it or not. So if you can talk...
Are you trying to impress your wife, Ed?
My wife hopefully is working. So, anyway, so we don't necessarily, is that, is that the consensus feeling that it's not necessarily a silver bullet, if you will, but that we can condition things such that...
How would you condition traffic, say?
Well, one way is, and I was looking through the minutes and comments, one way is you limit the number of units. It reduces traffic.
That's a clear way, yeah.
And it is a health and safety issue. It, it's a planning issue. The planning for, for the town in Nantucket, traffic issues in general, as Kiram alluded to, certainly never took into account, you know, 300-plus extra bedrooms, or whatever was first submitted.
And I remember, we talked about at one point, the proposed rotaries that, and I thought it was the, this MDM study that had the proposed rotaries?
Hmm.
And those were, that was the beta? Yeah, I'm so confused with all of these. But that they, those are not going ahead. Like, a lot of the things that one of the studies suggested would be implemented are not being implemented, so...
Well, one was shot down this year at Town Mill. Two?
I think the main rotary, the Fairgrounds Road Rotary and the Surfside Road improvements were both shut down. I don't know if it was at Town Meeting or on the ballot, but...
Yeah, it was at the ballot. Yeah, no, clearly, it's going to increase the traffic in that area quite a bit.
And then we also talked about just the, the safety issue of the single entrance and exit point for the whole South Shore development. It's been a concern.
I don't remember, Dave, I think it was Dave Iverson who gave us some stats, that the percentage increase was quite dramatic. Now, again, I believe those were for the original plan, but even so, even with the modified plan, the traffic impact is large.
Was the traffic impact, though, done on the modified plan? Was that on the, no, that was done on the original?
It was done on the 100.
Okay. Fifty percent is what Dave said.
So, again, looking to Ed and George, within reason, as long as we are reasonable, and we consider this a health and safety issue and one of paramount planning importance, it seems that one way to get to it is, one, we could ask for mitigation. If we don't feel that that's adequate, because I think the mitigation that was suggested was in the $145,000 range, based on, I'm not, you know, the proposed improvements in the area. But if we don't think that's adequate, is it reasonable to think we can peg, peg a number of units slash number of bedrooms to the overall permit?
I think the difficulty is that you have on record peer reviews that seem to support the 100-unit project. I think that that report talks about mitigation. It appears that mitigation is not going to happen in any reasonable timeframe. I think there may be a number of issues that you're going to lump together, which may result in a reduction in the number of units, and that you would address, you would say traffic will be helped by the reduction in units. So it's gone from 100, was the traffic study done on the 100 units?
I think it's done on the 100.
Was it done on the 150?
It was done on the 100 ultimately.
So, you're making a decision on 92 units, so there's already some reduction in terms of traffic, and there may be a further reduction.
I'm not sure that the, I don't have the number in front of me right now, but I'm not sure that the number of bedrooms went down from the 100 to the 92 much, and it's...
Very modest, I think.
Right. So my point being that, I don't know if there's a real, those eight units translate to much traffic reduction.
It's, I don't think, I don't feel it's a silver bullet. I don't think anybody feels it's a silver bullet. But it's one of the sort of factors that you're taking into consideration in this decision.
Right, and if you look at the Tetra Tech thing, they do say, conducting a peak season analysis is reasonable, given Nantucket's significant tourism during the summer months. So, they were doing, they did their study on June 28th. And then Tetra Tech, in our consultant's report, says it should be done in a more peak season. Daily traffic volumes are not collected as part of this traffic study. Let's see, what else did he say? Therefore, the applicant, there was something else about blah, blah, blah. It's historical since you have potential for operating conditions. These historical studies indicate potentially poor operating conditions, level services F at the intersection of Fairgrounds Road and Surfside South Shore Road. Therefore, the applicant should explain the significant difference between the seasonally adjusted baseline volumes and the historical traffic volume bid, and update the seasonal adjusted factors appropriate. So I just don't know if we ever got any follow-up on any of the things that our consultant brought up in these reports.
I don't think so. As I remember, what happened was they were squabbling over methodology, and then, over the course of the next couple of months, there was an agreement reached on the methodology, and therefore, to some degree, the results based on the studies that were done. Not necessarily, we didn't get any updated data.
Right.
I, I think it's fair to say that it's going to increase the traffic quite a bit. I see Ed's point about when we get a, we can't pick, we have to be careful about picking which consultants we want to listen to and which we don't. Within reason, again, if we think the consultants made an egregious error in some way, obviously we don't have to listen, but...
Well, from what Lisa said, or read back was, what I'm getting is that they also thought that that traffic study was not really as good as it should be. It should capture July, when we all know driving out down that road is horrible, and every other intersection is poor.
Right.
They did do some August dates.
Yeah. Yeah, they redid it.
And that's incorporated into the final, both ours and, meaning, beta.
Ed, August when?
Uh, I can't remember. I think it was the report, my page...
It was like August 13.
It was early August, I want to say. Don't quote me.
I mean, the bottom line is, it's, their level of service F, whether or not that is then mitigatable, if that's even a word, or if we...
Is it an F+ or an F-?
Or, again, we can, we can sort of look at, continue to look at other issues and see where we end up versus just using this as a, as a reason to reduce the number of units based on some mathematical formula, which we would have to come up with. I'm open to suggestion on that one. Because as, as Ed said, any other conditions that we impose that might have the effect of reducing the number of units or indoor bedrooms will obviously help on the traffic. But, as Ed said, I think we want to couch everything, not couch everything, but state that part of the, part of our overarching thought process is that the traffic, the health and safety of the neighborhood is behind our thoughts.
Yeah, I think, I think we can make this same argument with regards to pollutants going into the groundwater and the sewer, and it's going to increase things. We're already probably at a tipping point. And we just see the traffic, we don't see the, the pollutants going into the ground. So I think we look at this issue in the same way we would look at drainage issues and sewer issues, and look at it from a reduction of units for the safety, health, and local concerns for resolving these, or at least lessening the impact of them. And nothing, per se, with regard to the traffic, because when we look at the studies, there's not a lot there that say, you know, this is really going to blow things up.
Yeah, blow things up to the extent of it being a silver bullet. It's just going to make a bad situation worse, and arguably, much worse, certainly at the starting point. With every change in the number of units and bedrooms, obviously, it becomes incrementally better.
Right.
So I guess, again, it's sort of our choice which way we want to go. We could just say, let's limit it to number, you know, we think this number of units will make it worse, but not horribly worse, or just go the mitigation route, plus look at other issues.
I think it's hard to come up with a number of units.
I don't think they mitigate, I mean, I would much rather see a reduction in unit count.
Yeah, but how do you come up with that?
The mitigation is just going to go somewhere...
Into the black hole.
Into the black hole. And the town hasn't, you know, the town has been pretty, I mean, they're not, they're not making traffic a big issue regarding other developments and other, so I think we need to, our number of units here.
But how do you come up with that number?
I don't know how you come up with that.
Because the difference between 90 to...
Now they quantify.
Well, this, I'm going to, I'm going to restate my position since we're talking about this. I, and the more I dig into this, the more, more of this position that we should not approve the condominium units. And that's a, that'll be a big reduction. I realize, you know, this is a big ask, but for a lot of reasons, including traffic and pollution, I just, I just think if this were reduced to the single-family units, it'd be in keeping or consistent with local needs, for a lot of reasons. And one of the things that, since our last meeting, I looked at, and we can go into this later, but when you look at the cost per unit on these condominiums, I mean, it's staggering. The smallest unit is $1,200 a square foot. I mean, that's, that's affordable housing, whereas the single families are in the $600 range, you know?
Because they're spread out, yeah.
All right. And I don't want to be in this, you know, we are in this position where we're having to redevelop this property because we, we had a hard stop and we never got to finish it, but, you know, if this isn't the answer, then I guess we're going to have to redevelop it in some other way to reduce units.
Well, and I think when you build one condominium building, it's, it just seems like the impact, in terms of the number of cars that kind of sprout up overnight, seemed bigger than just a house here and a house there, or, you know, so...
Well, there's no question about it, because the applicant has made the statement many, 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 many times, that this is a, the multifamily buildings are for year-round use, and so those are going to be year-round cars. You can't even make the argument which the applicant tried to make, that some of the, on the single-family portion of the development, many of the cars aren't here.
Right.
But that is not true on a good, almost half of this development.
And I still believe that those condos would be very well densely inhabited, even for the year-round population to be able to afford them.
The other way of looking at it, Jim, is that versus saying we do not want or like condominium units, if, if somebody wanted to build one or, you know, four condominium buildings with X number of units, which total the number of units of single-family dwellings, that would be acceptable. I mean, that would be a reasonable alternative.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't want to sound like it's the, it's the ownership scheme.
No, I know that. I know that. But I'm just saying that rather than, I mean, again, I think what we want to do is ultimately issue is, or have a comprehensive permit draft written that has reason, has room for reasonable alternatives within the framework of what we would like to say. So, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I would keep going back to a site design review perspective of the project, see where you end up, even if it's that way. Your decision, you know, we'll have to look at those traffic reports again and see what is actually going to happen, what isn't, what was recommended, and what wasn't followed up. While you may not want to limit units based on a traffic concern, you're certainly going to have a lot of findings in your decision about existing problems, you know, that have been raised, about traffic issues, and all the other site review challenges that this, this development faces, where it's located. And with those findings, and you're going to, you know, you're going to use those to support that, those site design review conditions that you impose on this project.
Right.
So that may be the way you end up addressing it.
Yeah, because we have notes from last time that say, fourplex maximum-sized buildings is kind of what we said the last time.
Yeah, absolutely.
They need to be on a certain size lot, which I don't think we came up with the square footage of what that lot would be.
Yeah, and let me, let me just, it's not the condominium, it's not, it's a broad-brush statement I made, but it, I say condominiums, but it's real, I'm getting at the density.
The density, yeah.
Well, I mean, Lisa's speaking to the...
Four big buildings.
Yes. Speaking to the, the site design concerns, one could make the argument that, and I don't, I'm not saying 5,000 is the perfect number to start with, although it's what the applicant, again, multiple times, said is the smallest lot available on Nantucket that isn't pre-existing non-conforming, and that's sort of what they were pegging the, or, and to some degree, what we pegged the single-family homes to. If you take four bedrooms on 5,000 square feet, you get 1,250 square feet per bedroom. If we then begin to use that, then the five bedrooms go to 6,250.
Right. We had that 6,000, we have a rough number of 6,000 for five bedrooms.
The duplex goes to 7,500. The fourplexes go to, well, the interesting thing, the fourplexes, because they have seven bedrooms, would go to more like, somewhere between 8,700 and 9,200. One other way I looked at it was the open space that, well, if you have a 5,000-square-foot lot with 1,200 square feet per bedroom, you end up with about 840 square feet of, per bedroom, of open space after you net out the building size, their building size, which is roughly, on average, 1,284 square feet. There are smaller buildings in, but that, or that might have been their largest building, I can't remember. Anyway, you could do about an average of 865 square feet of open space per bedroom. If you then take that and apply it to the fourplexes, you get about 9,200, well, 9,300 square feet per fourplex.
Of open space?
No, of overall.
Of overall.
To get to that average number of 865 square feet of open space per bedroom. I mean, obviously, there's probably, you know, many, many different ways to look at the math, but I was looking at it from an open space perspective, so we don't cram too much into each thing, and as the buildings got larger, obviously, the lot size should get larger. I mean, I don't think duplexes on 5,000 square feet makes a lot of sense.
Right.
And I think the five-bedroom lots should be bigger, and all of a sudden, the traffic does get reduced.
Right. Because just by doing the math, you're, you can come up with a, what, how many units you would have, or bedrooms you would have.
Well, again, and we're not then pegging a decision to specific unit numbers. We're saying to the developer, here's some reasonable parameters based on what we consider good site planning...
Right.
...concerns, and you work it out however you want. You want to mix...
One of the notes I have is frontage, by the way.
Yeah.
Right.
I scribbled that one in. I think that's what, we flowed right into that.
I, I think that's clearly a better way to, to address it, to address it on site design issues. Jim, I just wanted, the numbers of, the square footage numbers on the condominium units have been all over the lot. The most recent schedule that was presented. Let me just tell you what those numbers are. I took their proposed prices, and there's absolutely no guarantee, although they say they'll be within 10% of that number.
Yeah.
So it was 455, 556, 5750 for studio to three-bedroom. As I reviewed this chart, the smallest studio was 560 square feet. That would be a cost per square foot of 872. For the one-bedroom, smallest was 781 square feet. For 704, for the two-bedroom, 706, and for the three-bedroom, 588. Those are, I'm not saying those are a bargain, but because they increased the size of the units, the cost per square foot obviously has come down.
Okay. Yeah, I was using a different square footage.
Right. Now, the initial ones were in that 1,200 range, it was, it was...
For lack of a better word, ridiculous.
For lack of a better word, ridiculous. To say that, you know, we're doing a great deal for the people.
Yeah. Well, again, we're not going to, we're not up here to redesign the whole project, because we're past that point. So we want to get to some metrics that we think, again, fit reasonable site planning constraints. And we had talked about frontage. There was a couple, we can go back to that if we'd like.
We just start making a list of definitive things that are site review?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think the size of the lot obviously is critical, as, as the buildings get larger, they need more space.
Right. So we had 50 feet minimum frontage, because there were a few lots that were under that.
But I think in the discussion, based on, and this is where it becomes difficult, when there isn't a definitive plan to be looking at, they did have one lot that we, you know, was sort of the pork chop, which was only 20 feet of frontage.
Yeah, there were more, there were five.
No, I know, but those, one of them was only, the only one was the pork chop, and I don't think any of us had a problem with the pork chop.
No, not that one. You're right.
It's just so, it's hard then to peg it to a specific number, because we can't...
What can't we say except for, except for like the one pork chop lot?
Yeah, we can, if the plan doesn't change, but I...
Yeah, it's Lot 41, I have, is okay, due to rear yard subdivision plan, you know, which they approved.
Right.
So Lot 41 was fine.
If we issued a comp permit, and they wanted to, wouldn't they just have to come back to change? Could they change that, or add more pork chop lots, or no? The lots are, the lots are done. Wouldn't it just be a substantial change?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I...
You'd have to, it's hard to say in the hypothetical, but they could come back as a substantial change. You're saying, okay, we're going to require 50 feet frontage for all the lots but for, you know, X, Y, Z lots. They may or may not have to come, it may or may not be a substantial change if they modified a couple, or sought to add one more or two more.
Well, let's, let's be honest here, if we get to a certain amount of, a certain number of criteria that don't fit this current plan, a new plan is going to be derived, whether it's through us, or through Hack, or negotiations with us and Hack and the applicant, or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, there's going to be another plan.
Right.
It would be good if you could see if you could work with that plan, though, that's on...
Okay.
...with you, to see if, if it is feasible to come up with a site design review decision, and you look at it, and you can specify or make exceptions for certain lots, or specify what your overall requirements are going to be, and then with exceptions. And if you can't do it, then we deal with that then.
I got you.
The extent you can work with this plan would be better.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, it was those, the two corners, right? The 20, 21, 30, 31, and 32.
Yeah, the pies?
Yeah.
The very narrow pies?
And you made the, I think somebody made the observation that more, most, a lot of them were also affordable, of the oddly shaped lots. And then the one in the upper corner, I don't know what the determination was on that, 16. It has no frontage, but it's in that back corner.
Was that what you were saying, that there's, was it that one? Okay, we were saying that would be maybe more sense to put kind of a combined...
Twoplexes on, something, or the fourplexes.
Well, yeah, remember, if, if they're going to reuse on this area here, then this will probably change, right?
Right. Yeah, but I think we were thinking that these should become one lot.
Yeah, I don't think there were an abnormal number of affordables that were on the...
Thirty-three percent of the less frontage lots are affordable of original six, is what I had written down.
See, I only see 20 as the one on...
Oh, 20 is the only affordable one?
Yeah, when I look at this, and they're all shaded in.
32, I thought was affordable.
32 is affordable.
2 is...
So it was, it was of the...
I thought 32 meant...
It's 33% of the six.
Right, right. I have written down greater than 25% are...
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's greater than 25.
All right, well, that, that we could easily condition. If indeed we even allow for lots with less than 50 feet.
I don't think we should.
I don't think we should either.
I think, I think we should say that they have to have a minimum of 50 feet, except for Lot 41.
Okay.
And, and I don't know what people think about Lot 16.
I, I mean, I liked the idea...
16 is one way in the corner.
Yeah.
Because then we said if they didn't, if they combined that, right, they wouldn't have to have this road extension. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Well, we also talked that that could become a, well, to Jim's point, depending on what happens with the multifamily units, that could be absorbed into that somehow.
Lisa, what did you have down? Four, four, four lots that were undersized?
I had six.
Six?
But then, one, we're saying Lot 41 is okay. 16, we're not sure, the other, the other four are definitely, we think, should be made at least a 50. Lot 21 has 19 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And then Lot 20 has 13 feet.
Yeah.
So those two should most definitely be, and that would still not be 50 feet of frontage.
No, it would maybe Lot... No, but maybe Lot Twenty-two has an excess...
Has three feet. I mean, so I...
And I thought that would be a first move as far as duplex.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, which brings me to the point of the duplex. The duplex lots, in my mind, are small in terms of area. They're only, I think, fifty-two hundred feet or...
Yeah. The biggest one is fifty-four.
Fifty-four hundred square feet. When you have six bedrooms, if you use the twelve hundred and fifty square foot per bedroom metric, they need seventy-five hundred feet. So, maybe that line of duplexes becomes three, and then there's another duplex tucked in that big, bigger corner lot. There's nothing to say that all the duplexes have to line up with one another. And I thought we were trying to make that point, but we never got beyond it. So...
So, Ed, your metric of twelve hundred and fifty square foot per bedroom, what is that from, the area?
Well, that's basically saying... And again, I'm not saying that this is magic math. It's... I'm just throwing it out there. The five... If the minimum lot size is five thousand square feet in the majority or the... Of the... I'm lumping the three- and four-bedroom houses together as one sort of unit, if you will. So, it's twelve hundred and fifty square feet per bedroom, which I think is a reasonable average for a four-bedroom house on a five thousand square foot lot. Anyway, as I said, they're... I grew up in the Reaganomics era, so you can do the math while I'm away.
Well, my... The reason why I ask is, do we need to look at this in terms of the waiver? The waivers and how, for instance, ground... They're looking for ground cover waiver, but we're giving them a per-bedroom metric?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the ground cover is another issue we need to speak about separately, and it's a good one. They've... They've... They've given us plans of houses. And I think that rather than give a blanket waiver on ground cover, we simply say, this is the ground cover. You don't get...
This... this metric, the twelve fifty?
Well, no, I'm saying what you've submitted, like, on type A5 is twelve hundred and eighty square feet of five thousand square... You know, that is the ground cover.
Footprints in Odyssey, the footprint as shown on a reference.
On this plan.
Right, so you don't use thirty percent as they have on their zoning table.
Exactly. Because thirty percent is greater in a lot of the single-family...
Well, that might be... Well, I don't know. I mean, I totally understand, and I get it, but... What happens in the future if somebody buys this as a homeowner and would like to... As a... Or even affordable or not affordable, and they want to do an addition?
They don't get to without coming back.
That you can't expand?
Super high density.
But you'd have to do a ground coverage calculation for every single lot, then?
No, you would say as it... As this...
As shown on the plan.
As shown on this plan, the ground coverage will not change.
Rather than us trying to come up with a specific...
Yeah.
Number of thirty percent or...
And if they wanted to modify it, they would just have to come before the board
Yeah.
And go through that.
Okay, so it won't be based on percentage, it'll be based on what's been submitted.
And what gets tricky on this is, in some projects I've worked on, the footprints shown on the engineering plans don't match the building plans. So, we need to say that... We need to check to see if the footprints are for building type E5 matches. I would assume Dawn has done that.
Well, I think what he should do is on the second sheet, which I think shows the house plans, he should specify ground coverage on those.
Well, he's not doing anything. We're looking at what we have.
So, we should check...
Unfortunately.
We should check the models to see if they're accurate.
I checked some ground cover, some... I didn't... I had reduced plans, so I could not scale them. I only used the measurements they had, and I could not make the math work. For their stated square footage on the first floor, I was coming up with different numbers. So, I can do it with a scalable set of plans, but...
That's not uncommon. So, then, in that case, you have to say, which... Does the site plan trump the building plans? Or do the building plans take precedence in terms of defining the maximum allowable footprint?
My feeling is the building plans...
Right.
Are the... The building can't all of a sudden get two or three feet wider. The building plans, which we have.
Well, one would hope that they're the right scale, because they have to be to show the parking property.
No, but my... I had a reduced set.
No, 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 I meant Dawn's plan.
Yeah, one would hope.
Would hope, because what if it's much bigger, and then you can't get the parking on there? I mean, so I'm... I would assume it's the right... But I'm happy to take the... If you have a large set of plans, I could just have somebody scale them in my office and come up with square footage.
Yeah, that would be really useful.
Well, because as I said, Lisa, to your point... Now, again, I don't know if they were measuring... Some of the measurements seem to be inside walls. Some of them seem to be outside walls.
Right.
But on... On one of them, I came up with a different number. Now, again, I could have inputted the wrong information, but... So, we need to do that bit of work, so we can say type E5 is one thousand one hundred and...
Well, just a chart.
Right, square feet.
With the different types, and this is the ground coverage, isn't it?
And they can't exceed that by a nano, you know?
Do we have a full-size set of drawings someplace?
Well, if it's... If this... Yeah, I have a reduced set where it says the scale's quarter to ten, so that must exist in a PDF form, the real size. Eleanor?
One foot equals... This is not a quarter to a... Yeah.
No, I have these reduced plans.
We have scale plans.
We have scalable plans.
In your office?
Yeah. I mean, there's so many iterations, to be honest. You have to tell me which dates I can...
Yeah.
And if I don't have them, I can get them from the architect.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful.
I'm sure we have them.
Well, I want to be careful. This is what was submitted to us.
We don't want to get any information.
This is what we're working with. I don't want to see new plans that...
No, I know. I'm just saying, if I don't have the scale of that particular set, which will need to be...
I think you have it, because, again, you just printed these out at eleven by seventeen, but the scale calls out for a twenty-four by thirty-six page size.
I probably do have it. And again, not hard for me to get it.
But I could also scan these in and just blow them up on the computer.
Yeah, but... Yeah, if push comes to shove. But all I'm saying is I had difficulty with the math. Now, that could be user error, as Eleanor pointed out to me.
So, I agree. We'll come up with a chart of what the maximum ground coverage is per each house type.
Based on this plan. So, as George said, we're in large measure trying to stick to this plan. So, then, we can...
Well, the set that I have here, four-eleven?
Yeah, these are four-eleven. And then, you know, you get into... I mean, most of the lots... Well, that... Doesn't matter. Then we need to continue the discussion on the... On the lot size as it relates to this plan.
So, based on your metric, sixty-two or six thousand square feet for a five-bedroom house?
Well, just keep it consistent, sixty-two fifty.
For five-bedroom houses. And even though, I think, if you combine twenty and twenty-one, it would probably be a reasonable size. It would give you enough frontage. We want to just say fifty feet minimum, except for Lot Forty-One.
I... Yeah, I don't know how else we can do it other than redesign everything, which I don't think we want to get to, so...
Yeah, so if we're... If I'm looking at the intensity regulation waiver, if we were planning to say, as shown on plan, whatever plan we decide, then are we, in effect, gonna be redesigning those condo lots?
Well, I think you mean if we get to... If... Well, if we've said, which we did last time, that the maximum building size is the fourplex, and if we then say you need, let's say, if we're using math, again, using the open space method to get there, ninety-two... Ninety-three hundred square feet or even eighty-seven fifty, you know, somewhere in that range, that's dedicated... That doesn't include the road. It does include parking.
Yeah. And also, we talked about... Did we talk about increasing the buffer?
Well, we made sure that fifty... The fifty-foot buffer had to be maintained undisturbed. So, if there was... There were catch basins in there and such that...
And I believe we also said no spas.
No spas on anything, yeah.
On anything.
Because if we change the buffer, that's gonna change the lots, right? Or the configuration.
So, the buffer's fifty in the front on South Shore, and then twenty-five all around?
But the buffer in the front won't be... Won't be maintained, because it would be completely cleared.
Right, because of the drainage, right?
Right.
Well, in the sewer plant, sewer thing.
So, it'll be cleared, and then they have to replant it?
No, we're saying...
No, we're saying it has to remain in its natural vegetative state.
You'll have to take that...
Oh, I thought you just said it would be cleared.
Well, that's what... Jeff is making the point that we can say, if we're gonna allow... If the sewer plant and the drainage is in that area, it will be cleared, because that's the only way you can get it in it. What we said at the last meeting is, no, we would like that to remain in its natural vegetative state. If... And potentially augmented, but...
Just the plan... I don't see anywhere on the plan that it says that... That, I mean, it says fifty feet here, but it doesn't say anywhere the distance of this, you know?
That's not the...
Yeah, it does. I don't know.
On another page.
That's...
Yeah, it's twenty-five more.
One to five-foot vegetated buffer. So, we did say...
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, if you're still on that.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that we did say no spas, right?
We certainly were talking about no spas.
We're all up.
Yeah.
And again, it's twelve fifty per square foot regardless. If it's a duplex, it's twelve fifty square foot.
Okay. If everybody... I mean, that would...
So, we ended up with sixty... Let's see, I had duplex lots, seventy-five hundred feet, square feet minimum.
And that includes the parking on the lot.
Right, it's like in a residential, you would... Your parking would be part of your lot.
And we also talked about, if we're reiterating what we listed last time, that the five-bedroom units had to have three parking spaces on-site. Thus, the larger lot size from a site planning standpoint. Same with the duplexes, same with the fourplexes. The fourplexes arguably have to have all their parking, which I think we pegged it at seven. One for the studio and two for the other three units, two each.
Can I just ask one? Eleanor, is it possible to start getting you to organize a list of these things?
Well, it brings me to a point that was gonna be at the end. I mean, at a certain point, George, we're gonna... What do you think in terms of beginning to get a draft together?
Yeah.
Not so much the boilerplate, but...
What I was envisioning was, once I had kind of a consensus feel from the board about where you were headed, like, number one, is this gonna be a denial or an approval of conditions?
Right.
And if it's gonna be an approval of conditions, what is the consensus in terms of site design review issues? I had envisioned preparing a draft decision and then presenting that to you for discussion at your next deliberations.
Okay.
And the way I had sort of seen it was, hopefully, we were gonna get kind of a sense of consensus today. I was gonna follow up with a draft decision for use, you know, during your next deliberations, and then really get to the point where that would result in enough more feedback from you to put together a final decision.
And will it be listed as site plan issues or... I mean, how will you organize the points that we're bringing up?
The decision would pretty much be, and again, excluding the boilerplate part, would really be your findings. But what evidentiary-wise came as a result of these public hearings, those findings and factual background, then we would get right into the... To the site design review issues, incorporating the plan and then the conditions of approval, if it were, if you are inclined to do approval. It would be conditions, you know, specifying what waivers are being granted, what are not, and everything else shall apply. It would specify the conditions, such as you're talking about, about minimums, fifty-foot frontage for lots except for, you know, Lot Forty-One or what else. And that would pretty much be it. And then, you know, conditions related to infrastructure concerns, like sewer and water and that type of thing.
So, at the next meeting, if I'm hearing George correctly, we'll have that list.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it'd be helpful to have it sort of in a list that I can just... A bullet point list in a way.
Would you mind quickly going down that? Because my computer just ordered up. I have some major problems, and it's all finally fixed.
So, we... Okay, so we had a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet other than Lot Forty-One?
No.
Frontage.
Sorry.
Frontage, yeah.
Wait.
No, no, sorry. No, single-family houses, minimum lot size of five thousand square feet, right?
The minimum lot size was five thousand.
For a four-bedroom house, sorry. Frontage of... Minimum of fifty feet other than Lot Forty-One.
No spas.
No spas. Minimum of sixty-two fifty square feet for five-bedroom houses.
Minimum of... I'm sorry?
Six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet for the five-bedroom houses. Minimum of seventy-five hundred for duplex lots.
Minimum of what?
Seventy-five hundred.
Does that mean, then, that fourplex would be double that?
No, the fourplex has seven bedrooms in it.
So, that's...
Now, the way I got to the number that I wanted to use was... Well, you can either go with the twelve... Well, we should discuss it. It's either the twelve fifty per bedroom, which I guess for consistency's sake would be eighty-seven fifty, or that reduces the... That's about a hundred square feet below the average open space per bedroom. So, you're giving up open space, but...
Well, I just think we should be consistent on how we...
That's fair.
How we come up with them all.
It's fair. Well, I can certainly come up with it a different way, but that's fine.
What's the different way?
Well, you use the open space calculation.
And so, what would that be?
And the average open space... It's too complicated. Just go with the twelve fifty.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I could sit at my computer playing with spreadsheets for hours, so...
So, you said twelve fifty square feet, open space per bedroom?
No.
Twelve is... Twelve square foot.
Per bedroom.
Per bedroom, period.
Lot size.
Lot size.
So, eighty-seven fifty would be a fourplex.
Yeah. Dedicated space.
Minimum of three parking for five-bedroom lots. Three parking spaces on-site for five-bedroom lots.
Yep.
For five-bedroom lots?
Mm-hmm.
Two spaces per duplex, so four for duplex. And I was saying seven for a fourplex.
And we're saying the maximum unit size is a fourplex.
That's what we said.
What was that, sorry?
The maximum...
Maximum multifamily unit size.
Is a fourplex.
But how many, are we, we obviously are going to limit how many two-bedrooms, fourplexes, duplexes, right?
Yeah, because you would have to, Jim, otherwise, all of a sudden...
You could redesign it.
You could redesign it. Well, could...
Well, it's the fourplex that's been presented in the plan.
No, I think what I, what, if we just, you still have to ultimately, or Ed, don't you and George think that, you know, we don't want to, we don't want the negotiated redesign to be forty-fourplexes?
We can say we...
Even though they fit the criteria.
We should be able to have a minimum of thirty-four, single-family houses.
That's why we need a...
So that's why we ultimately have to play a little bit with the, you know, what fits in and say, you can have eight fourplexes, four duplexes, and, and, because that's what I think fits with some open space, the road, and with the road and the basketball court or, whether it's a basketball court or some sort of rec area, ten thousand square feet for the road, you end up with about eight fourplexes.
And then four duplexes, did you say?
Well, not in, you'd have to find another spot for the fourth duplex, because those lots currently are fifty-four hundred square feet at their largest. So you're basically, for every, every, every third gets reduced by, yeah.
So how many units does this give us?
What's the, what's the, what's the single-family count, thirty-six?
Well, the single-family count, we'd have to back into it, because you're going to take probably one of the, two of the lots for, um...
Well, to get...
A duplex.
Yeah, well, to get your frontage.
Yeah.
You're going to lose a lot of single-family lots.
Well, not a lot, but a few, yeah.
You'll lose two, two lots. But what are they asking for?
They're asking for thirty-eight, forty-six, no, I'm sorry, more than that. I don't even have it in front of me, obviously.
I mean, if, if they could, I, I have a hard time fitting eight fourplexes into the area that's designed for, look, I'll show you, this is my simple way to understand.
Yeah, that's the idea, but it's the...
So here's, well, here's, here are the fourplexes. So that's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, that's seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah, I thought you could...
Did you count that?
I thought if you wanted the open space there, yeah, we counted that.
I mean, these are tight, there's no question. This one is super tight to the lot line, it's on the...
But you can move it a little more.
But...
So I, I thought eight, eight might be high.
The maximum.
Because if you had eight max, that's eight times four is thirty-two, that means a loss of, of eight units. Four times eight is thirty-two, they have forty...
Right.
Units right now.
Okay.
And we want them, are we going to specify they're all, they're all clustered, or are we going to have them spread them out like we also discussed?
Well, I think, you know, again, it's not like you have to design it, you say, if you're going to want, and if you can figure out how to do it some other way that...
Well, Ed, are you, is your suggestion more like this? I mean, that certainly gives you more breathing room.
That gives you more breathing room.
So that's six.
That does not meet, meet the math, that does not necessarily meet the mathematical model.
That you came up with.
Twelve hundred and fifty feet per.
Well, it could also be five, right?
Yeah, I, I thought you could, I thought you could do...
Seven.
That, to me, feels...
Yeah, you're right, seven, seven is actually what it works out to mathematically.
Number, count two, probably.
Okay.
What, what does that reduce the unit count to?
Well, seven times, uh, uh, seven.
Twenty-eight.
Four times seven is twenty-eight versus forty.
We're here at seven now?
Minus twelve units, ninety-two, eighty-two, it's down to eighty units.
And then four duplexes is eight, right?
Yeah.
And then the single-family houses, they had fifty-one presumably.
No, not, they didn't have fifty-one, I mean...
Forty-four.
Forty-four, you're going to lose probably, you have to lose, you have to lose an increment of four, because it has to be divisible by four.
So you'd be forty, single-family.
And if you have that standard for duplexes, you're not going to get four duplexes here, you're going to get three duplexes here.
Right, and then you, this becomes a duplex.
And then that becomes a duplex, so that's just a net.
And the upper corner could become a duplex, too.
Yeah, or that does, somewhere.
So are we telling them that these specific lots become duplexes?
No.
So if we're not telling them that, that we need to tell them, then I think we just need to leave it general, X number of single families, X number, because we're kind of quasi redesigning it, but not redesigning it, and I think, I guess I have a concern about that, is, I don't want them to, the developer to appeal this based on the fact that we don't really, we don't give them a plan, we just give them the number of units, which is, might be fine, and then we look at the, and review the plan, or we refer to a plan as shown with us redesigning this.
Well, I think we can do, or George, referring to you, or, and/or Ed, we can have some suggested notions where you can put that fourth duplex, but we don't have to stipulate it goes there. I mean, if you're going to, all you have to do is put two lots together and you have a duplex, you have an excess duplex lot, so...
You still don't have fifty feet of frontage on some of these lots, even if they're put together.
So that's my concern, we're almost, we almost need a computer now that we would in site planners.
I don't think we're supposed to, I mean, they wouldn't, we wouldn't submit a site plan saying, this is how you would design it.
If you define criteria, like, as you've been doing, five thousand for a four-bedroom house, sixty-two fifty for a five-bedroom house, duplex was up to, what was it, seventy?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
Quad, the fourplex was eighty-seven fifty.
How many bedrooms are in the duplex?
Seven, I think, that's it.
I mean, if they wanted to put...
Six in the duplex.
Are you at seven fourplexes in the front?
Six bedrooms and a duplex, it's thirty-three.
We were at, so what I have is seven fourplexes at twenty-eight units.
You're going to lose another, uh, they're going to, there's going to be a modification, you know, no one's losing anything, there's going to be a modification in the number of single-family dwellings if you insist on keeping, if the developer insists on keeping five bedroom units, because he has to make those lots bigger. So that's a choice, we're giving him a reasonable choice.
Yeah.
You want five bedrooms, go for it, you just need bigger lots. You want more units, less, and you...
And can't we say that the maximum number of units is thirty-six, single-family, the maximum number of units in the quads is twenty-eight, and the maximum is eight in the duplexes? And let them figure out how to do it.
I'd like to give, rather than, if you don't mind, if, if we're all of the same basic mind of, with this, this math in mind, let's do, give it a little thought. The developer has said, I want fifteen, you know, the, the five bedrooms has been a very big concern, and every time that number changed, it got bigger and bigger and bigger. So if you want fifteen of them, fine, that's fifteen sixty-five hundred square foot lots. You are losing, that's, that's twelve fifty that, so for every four, five bedrooms, you're losing another lot.
A single-family, and then you have to make it divisible by four.
So, because the, the concern I have is saying, in saying, and maybe, maybe this is wrong-headed, but the concern I have in saying you have, you know, you have a maximum of thirty-six single-family units, Hack says, well, they said they could have thirty-six, we'll just reduce the lot size so you can fit them all in, so...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about Hack as much as having a rational basis of what the conditions you're imposing, so...
Right.
All right. You know, and that's, that's why I, I really want to nail this down, about what you're imposing, because it, then you don't have to design it for them.
Yeah, I mean, I...
They can, they can design it within the parameters.
Right.
And I would put a limit on the single-family units, I'm not sure I'd put a limit on the duplex units, because that might give them some flexibility, but I would put a limit on the multifamily fourplexes.
Well, I think the only reason that I was thinking that you'd want to put a maximum on some of these is because what you don't want them to do is say, well, you know, well, we decided not to do thirty-six single-family houses and we're only going to do, well, they won't do that, because that's certainly their bread and butter, I suppose, on this, but, you know, they'll say, well, we're only going to do thirty-two, and we're going to do, then twice as many duplexes.
Well, I think, I think you're, I think Lisa's right, I think we need to, the multi, multi-unit buildings, whether they're a duplex or a fourplex, that needs to have a maximum number, and...
There are forty-four single-family dwelling...
Right.
Right.
So you're taking, I'm trying to keep up with these...
Well, we're not, we're not pegging it to any number, we're saying, I think, meet these criteria, the lot sizes.
Lot sizes and frontage.
And, you know, no more than seven fourplexes, no more than four duplexes, because that's what you showed us, and fit the single families however you see fit.
Yeah, I think that would...
So, so I'm all...
That's right.
I'm all for it, I'm all for that, but the, are we allowing them to open it up to redesign the roadways and all, are we saying, within this construct of the roadways?
Within the construct of the roadways.
With the buffers?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
With the, okay.
Subject to the following modifications, otherwise approved.
And we, we talked about the multifamilies not being contiguous or next, next to each other. Are we imposing that?
I'm not sure we can do...
I don't mind if they're quad...
Which now requires...
I think if they're quadplexes, they're small enough that you could have them on that little ring and they won't feel out of scale.
And you said four duplexes, not eight, they were asking for eight, seven?
No, no, they were asking for eight units in four building, four, four buildings.
Four buildings, eight units.
A, B, C, and D. Back to the frontage for one second, there was lot, the, the pork chop, and there was also the corner lot. Are we okay with the corner lot?
No, well, no, I just said, I just excluded the pork chop.
I know that.
I'm not okay with the corner lot.
What do you mean by quarter lot?
Sixteen, sixteen.
I think that's sort of, yeah, I'm, I, I think they could deal with that by, I guess, if we're, if we're saying you can have a maximum of only four duplexes and seven fourplexes, and they wouldn't be able to use that for one of those, but, I, I don't, I'm...
I'm okay with sixteen.
I'm okay with sixteen.
I'm not worried about a single-family.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with it.
So, other than lot forty-one and sixteen, those two are excluded.
You're going to lose a couple, you know, you're going, you know, all those radiuses on those roadways, you're going to lose some more lots.
Definitely.
That's fine.
And you're going to lose some lots if you go to sixty-five hundred square feet.
And I think you're going to lose lots if we say that the buffers have to be non-disturbed fifty feet and twenty-five, because...
And again, let's just be clear, we're not...
Sixty-two fifty square feet.
Sixty-two fifty, what did I say, sixty-five hundred? I'm trying to get in your head. No, I meant, I meant sixty-two fifty, and I apologize. I was just trying to sneak it in there. No, let me just go, go, say, though, we're not looking to reduce things, we're just looking at this from a site planning concern, and if, if things get reduced, so be it, but that's not our stated goal.
I mean, I assume you have a rational basis on your positions, like, you're talking about what, compatibility to the neighborhood?
Definitely compatibility to the neigh, I mean, quite frankly, five thousand square feet is not compatible with the neighborhood.
Right.
But it's the absolute minimum, I mean, again, you, you could go so far and we can open up that discussion, if, do we think five thousand is the minimum? I mean, we just are using that number because it's the minimum on Nantucket, but it's not compatible with this area.
I think we should stay with that first standard, yeah, the five thousand minimum.
I think, I think it has been used elsewhere and, you know, again, we want to have some leg to stand on.
Yeah.
We're trying to come up with a...
And I think, quite, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's more than reasonable from the, from the developer's standpoint. I don't think it's imposing, I think it's, I think it's, I think we've bent over backwards. So is that...
I would stick with the five thousand.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. So, that, that, and then on the...
Did you come to the square footage for the fourplex lots, or are we not there yet?
We did, it was eighty-seven fifty.
And it's all going to be on one lot each month?
And again, that's exclusive of, of roads and any ancillary parking.
We also had a maximum square footage for the rec building of fifteen hundred square feet per floor.
When, when we talk about that, I went and looked at the other rec buildings...
Yep.
And printed out, but I couldn't, Park Circle, for some reason, does not come up on the GIS, it's like...
Eighteen hundred square feet on the, on the...
Do, nobody inform me?
Like, eighteen hundred square feet on the ground for the rec building?
I have fifteen hundred.
That's what it comes up as, the building for GIS.
Yeah, I have, I have that.
Because the rest of them are all under, it's like, A, A Park Circle, no, but it's all one lot, what I'm saying, I couldn't just click on that one house.
Got you.
It doesn't have it's on, anyway, I'll find it, but when we get to the rec building.
On that rec building, I think we talked about, you talked about eighteen, you talked about fifteen hundred feet on the lot, I think we determined that eighteen was probably more reasonable.
That's footprint, right?
Footprint, yeah.
I have that, too.
I had more green space, reduced recreation building, thirty-six hundred total square feet on three floors, fifteen hundred square feet...
On the ground.
On the ground, but, I don't know.
I think Lisa, what came up, again, I was probably the advocate for the fifteen hundred square feet to start with, and then somebody said, well, what if you want to make it a little more architecturally interesting with a little bump or something, blah, 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 or mailroom or something.
Blah, blah, blah.
Well, that's just what I heard, blah, blah, blah.
But just to clarify, the lot that it's on does not change.
Yeah, the rec building, the rec building, it said, uh...
I have fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred on ground, fifteen hundred basement, whatever you can get on the second floor.
Yeah.
I have that.
All right.
I have fifteen...
That's what I had in mind, as long as it's consistent.
And we did not change the size of the rec building lot, though.
No, the rec building lot stays the same and it becomes green space.
You give up, it's green space.
And it becomes a child's play area, it becomes community, public area.
No commercial activity.
No commercial activity.
Residents only.
All right, we, we, we got, we got, let's not get back to what we've, one thing that we've covered, but...
Let's not reiterate everything, I'm with George.
Did we agree, did we agree on the square footage, though, like, I...
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Total on the ground.
Yeah.
But four thousand square feet of usable space, that's what I...
Whatever you can get after fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We had fifteen hundred basement, fifteen hundred first, and one thousand on the second.
Yeah, that's, I think, how we came up with the four thousand.
Okay, okay.
Do, do we need a minimum frontage for the duplex lots? We, I thought we specified minimum frontage but for two lots.
Well, we did, but I think what I was saying is it...
That was for single families.
I mean, I, I think they're naturally going to get wider.
They look like they're sixty, I'm just guessing.
But yeah, no lot should be, no lot period should be less than fifty, and that includes any other...
The duplex, you said, had six bedrooms, so, we didn't do a frontage for...
Scale to be over sixty feet, sixty, sixty-seven, sixty-two, sixty-four, and eighty-six.
I need a cookie.
He's looking at me.
I already have one.
I mean, I, I, we, we can...
The duplex lots need to be a minimum of sixty-two feet in the frontage?
Well, those are five thousand square feet, so they're going to get bigger.
True.
I mean, assuming this all is...
So what are they showing on the plan right now for frontage on those?
The duplex lots?
Fifty, sixty-two.
Sixty-two, sixty-seven, sixty-four, and eighty-six.
So why don't we just say a minimum of sixty, or sixty-five, knowing that they're going to get bigger anyway, because the square footage has to change.
Because the, the lot size is a fifty-four thirty-three, fifty-two oh four, fifty-two oh four.
Let's say a minimum of seventy feet, they're big, they need to be bigger, seventy by a hundred plus.
So minimum of one hundred, we're talking about the seventy feet?
Or seventy-five, and times a hundred is seventy-five hundred square feet, that's, that's the lot size. Does that work? I, I don't care, but it's seventy, seventy-five.
Well, we'd get seventy.
Seventy, done.
Give them a little flexibility.
I need a gavel.
Irregular sized lots.
Can I ask you for the application scenario of someone who's talking, the fourplexes will be eighty-seven fifty square foot, lot size exclusive of roadway and.
Parking.
Well, the parking, no, the parking's part of, any ancillary parking. In other words, they can't say, oh, these, street parking is part of that eighty-seven fifty, basically, they have to be on their own little lots.
So they're not gonna have this one big lot eleven.
They still can, I'm just saying, you would have to show on a plan that it works, not include.
Lease areas or, you know.
Yeah, not including the road, again, I still think it would be a better ownership not to have it glom together, but that's me.
What's, what's the seventy-foot frontage for?
Duplex lots, only, okay?
And how about fourplexes?
The fourplexes, um, they're not gonna be arguably, again, without redesigning their whole thing, the, um. What, what is, let's say they stay in that weird shaped lot, what is the frontage on that, that's plenty, right?
Plenty.
Total frontage on that?
Well, and if they include a road back there.
It's gonna be a lot, I mean, it's hundred and, two hundred, three hundred, and four hundred, three hundred and seventy-five, if you, if you, only if you do this side, it's like three seventy-five, so. If the road is. How do you make sense to make that a road anyway, because don't you want that maintained by the association then?
I think the critical metric on the fourplexes might be the minimum distance, we've, we've said the lot size.
Yep.
Uh, per duplex unit, I think the most important metric is the minimum distance between the closest points on adjacent buildings.
Yep, and, and if we wanna speak about that right now, if you look at L one. The fourplex to the right, fourplex A, and that's very close to, it's on, it's on the setback, it's on the five-foot setback, if, if indeed that's the rear setback we want for the fourplexes. I think arguably for the larger buildings, you could say, you need a greater setback.
Well, the duplexes are that way too.
What's that?
The duplexes are like that too.
I agree.
But those are the size, well.
Well, those are their, uh.
They're sort of the size of the house, and once those lots get bigger, presumably, the setbacks will increase. If we go from three duplex, from four to three.
I mean, it's hard to come up with a number because we don't have a plan, but. Why don't we revisit that particular issue, and we'll play with the plan on that? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Well, how do we, well, fine, if you can give me the distance between two fourplexes?
You can just arbitrarily, what, what do you think, twenty-five feet?
Oh yeah, minimum, my God, I would think it would be more like.
My quick and dirty.
Well, just take those the distances between the eight unit building, there is close as, in terms of the closest point, they're about twenty feet. What does a fire department require, do they require?
Arguably ten, or five, ten with what?
No, thirteen feet for a fire truck, no, that's the height.
No, I thought it was twelve or thirteen feet.
It used to be twelve, I think.
Oh, right, between primary and secondary dwellings, it's, it's reduced to ten, I think, it used to be twelve.
Some of these are very close right now.
Well, this, this section of the room is like twenty-eight feet long, or thirty feet long.
Okay, thirty feet in between buildings, done?
Well, I was, I was just giving a scale.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that, that seems reasonable, if Kiram was living over there, I could live with that if I was over there.
So, uh, is that any, any of the duplexes, I mean, any of the, between two buildings?
And what did you say, scale two or?
I'm sorry?
What did the plan scale to, if you did a?
Some of them were twenty.
Like, between the two eight-unit buildings right now, they're currently, uh. They're both fifteen feet, one seventy feet, one twenty feet. Between, between a fourplex and an eight-unit condo, currently now, it's like eleven feet.
I, I agree, we gotta move off this point.
So. I, I feel like we're making, we're creating new, uh, intensity regulations.
I know, that's something. Do we have to say?
You know, does this mean, so how do you, how do you factor the side yard setback, then? So can someone, right on the line?
I thought we were gonna get some feedback from the fire marshal written.
I think if you just use side, side yard setbacks, you probably accomplish this.
Well, they're not on individual lots, is the issue, if they keep the one big lot, as a one big condo yacht, lot, then it's more of a separation in between buildings, and, and it would be roughly, uh, you know.
So with your little diagram there, Ed, what is, what did those scale at, with, with the seven buildings, roughly?
That's about thirty.
Yeah.
That's thirty, then.
That's the green space, yeah.
In order to make that.
We should make sure we write that as a condition, that that.
That's thirty. That's about thirty.
So we can get thirty feet?
So that's about thirty, with the exception of the open.
Now, we might be able to soften our stance on the, on the basketball court if, if a lot more green space was created over, uh. So, and if, if those buildings can get a little bit more space in between them, so each individual owner has their own little, uh, private. Or, or at least designated area, I mean, I, I would be okay with that. So, so you maintain some space, you can maintain that thirty feet.
I was saying, it's like, we could do thirty, thirty feet would work.
One gets very close to the road, you know, if you're putting four on one side and three on the other.
I guess I'm not as bothered by it as close to the road, but.
Okay. I mean, the single families are as close as, um, well, I, that, getting back to the single families, are we good with thirty feet in between buildings?
For the big ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am.
Thirty feet in between the fourplexes.
Yeah.
Minimum distance, scalar, scalar separation.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, and I don't wanna keep going backwards, but we did, at the last meeting, state, I'm pretty sure that the sideline setbacks on the single-family dwellings were going to be five on one side and ten on the other.
We were using R one as R.
Okay, and which, which, looking at the plan, many of the, I don't think that's a huge impact, cause it looks like it meets it in large measure.
Right, most, most of the, well, most of the buildings are at least twenty feet apart.
Right.
Some are, some are greater than that.
Yeah.
And we're gonna say six fourplexes?
Seven.
Seven, I was looking at it, it's, oh, okay, so limit it to seven.
Yep.
On one lot, and using your fourplex perimeter of eighty-seven fifty, you're just combining seven times eighty-seven fifty?
It's fifty-eight, forty, four fifty, but if the road is included in that, that's how they came up with.
That's why we don't have a lot line.
The lot itself is eighty-five thousand, two twenty.
Okay. If they wanted, Ed, I mean, Jim, whatever your name is, George, to, uh, um, go to individual lots.
Yeah.
They would have to go to that other size, but if they keep it as one big lot.
Okay.
Just have this sort of a, as a designated area, and, and not by some odd pork chop over to some area, you know, it just needs to be.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does, I just, I feel the pain for George to come up with all these parameters in here to like.
George is a pro.
Uh, and we did make the. Write a draft, and then we can come back and revisit them and see.
Yeah, so let's not revisit everything now.
I just wanna make sure we put a split rail fence at the buffer zones.
Split rail fence to the buffer zone, sounds good. And no disturbance of the buffer zone, by the way.
I already told you that, fifteen twenty-five.
So split rail fence to delineate the entirety of the buffer.
Yeah, no habitable use of attic space.
Disturbing the buffer zones.
I'm gonna get into those.
We're gonna enhance the buffer zones, correct?
There were some areas that were going to be enhanced, I thought, um, landscape plan as, uh, such as we have it is. Are we, should, are we?
I've seen conditions in concrete where you don't try to figure out everything in advance, you have that general language, but you add one more thing. As, um, as determined by the building inspector, so you go up to the site, you say, hey, here's a big gap, you gotta plant something there. And I don't know whether you want to be the building inspector or somebody else.
Ed Pesci.
You know, my, my, my preference is to be pretty specific on this stuff, it's, it's so environmentally sensitive that I just don't want a building inspector to decide what tree, any caliber, size, non-native, that's my concern, but we can, we can address that.
I mean, I don't think it should be the building.
Do that, you can say if there's more.
Let, you know, let our inspector, whoever that is, make that determination.
That sound, I mean, I'm, I'm just playing the devil's, devil's advocate for the, for the developer, I mean, that's pretty open-ended. Somebody can come along and tell me I have to plant six hundred trees?
You know, they, they, you know, they say they're gonna augment it, so.
Well, I think, I think we should then say.
Augment with the.
With X number of trees at X number of caliber, or leave it undisturbed, period.
Or, if, if you're concerned about that, is that, can you, say, well, let's say if there's a gap of more than ten feet, eight feet, fifteen feet.
I think that's an impossibility for George.
Well, if we're asking them not to disturb it, why do they have to augment it at all?
I, I, that's sort of where I'm starting now.
I think that's why that's in there, is because they were originally gonna disturb it with, for the drainage.
Yeah, cause they provided us with a list of trees and things that they were gonna use, right?
Right, and they show some new trees, like at the entrance, and it's probably listed, it says seven Hawthorn.
Well, those, those are the new, new plant, oh, that's in that front buffer zone, yeah.
Six Hawthorns, here, so they do specify seven new Hawthorn trees on one opening and six on the other. They're showing a certain number of trees on this plan, so can it be for the plan?
I think there has to be, you know, Jeffrey, I'm not an expert, but to build those road entrances, there's going to have to be some disturbance. Yeah, to the right and left, as you get in to build that.
Here we go, here's the plant list.
So I, I think, we, the language can be such that. Except that the road entrance area where you can disturb up to ten, you know, I'm, I'm throwing a number out there.
Well, that's fine, we can do that, but I don't think we should, and I think that they do still need to not only retain the buffer zone, but they need to enhance it.
Okay, well then, let's define that, because I don't know how we define it, I don't think it's realistic to say, you know.
What did we say?
Somebody's gonna be out there measuring in between trees, or, uh, if, but.
They have a plant list on the last page.
Yeah.
I see that, it looks woefully inadequate.
Well, I know.
What did we do for station path?
They're invasive species in our property.
So.
For station.
It was undisturbed, they put in a split rail fence that they couldn't go past.
Well, we're gonna do that on, on.
For, they obviously.
We didn't augment it.
For the road.
No, but for the roadway, I'm saying, like, whatever we put, whatever we put in their comp permit, or they had to disturb the.
To get the roads in.
To get the roads in, so whatever, why don't we just, let's not reinvent the wheel, it was successful.
Right, it seems like if we're putting the split rail fence around the rest of the buffer zones for non-disturbed at all. It's pretty clear, that, and then you wouldn't have to augment that stuff.
Yeah, I agree, and I think at the entrance, you just draw a, a new line of split rail fence here and here, cause they're going to have to disturb.
Right, and they're suggesting new, seven new Hawthorns there.
Where those are.
I'm trying to find them on this list, oh, Washington, thirteen, they're only an inch and a half to two-inch caliber, that's pretty small.
Well, that, if we, we seem to have segwayed to landscaping, uh, the size doesn't meet the town, the size as, do not meet the town requirements.
Which is three, right?
There is a bylaw, so, and I don't even think they asked for a waiver for it, so, this plan can't be accepted as such. The size.
Those are the street trees, you're talking.
Yeah. I guess it would only be the street trees. Which are the, I don't think, are they showing trees on individual lots?
No, I think it's.
No, they're all street trees, and the count doesn't, the count on the plan is less, wait a minute. The plan and the list don't, um.
Jive.
Jive. Yeah, I believe the plan shows a hundred and forty-three, again, I was counting, you know, this isn't exact science, but.
Why does a light pole also be a tree, no, that's not a tree.
Hundred and forty-three trees, and the, and the quantity of the plant list shows a hundred and eleven.
Uh, do, do, were you counting the light poles? Cause they're circled, they're circled like they're a tree.
I, let me see, it says light pole.
I know, but still.
Typical, I mean, I can still read.
He's not that old yet.
No, but if you're counting, I would have.
No, I did not count, I have little numbers, and there are no numbers next to the light pole.
Oh, I see, you wrote them all out.
I thought they were those, um, cellular antennas that look like trees.
Yeah, that's okay, like the fur, the furries, you mean, that look like they're.
Now, again, unfortunately, because of the way this has all transpired, if the plan changes to some degree, the plant list might change, but that's something that can be negotiated. I think that, um, a hundred and forty-three plant, trees show on the, uh, L one drawing, and that's what they should provide, and they should meet the town sizing criteria, which I, I think is a three-inch caliber, three to three and a five, three point five.
Yeah, in terms of the, um, plant list, there's Japanese black pine there.
Yeah.
As part of the list, so Linda Lauren got, the foundation got fifty-two thousand dollars from the state to remove Japanese black pine because it's invasive, so, I don't think it's a good idea to them.
We introduce?
Yeah.
I don't see, I think, Jim, are you looking at, I think, where are the Japanese black, oh yeah, I see, on the buffer planting, yeah?
So.
I was not, by, by the way, I did not count the buffer planting.
Well, I, my point.
I'm just saying.
My point is, I think, uh, we should just make it, uh, even a blanket statement, uh, native plants.
No invasive species.
Okay, my, my feeling on, I have a slightly different viewpoint on native, unless you're talking about when the glacier dropped dead, the plant seed. Um, what constitutes native?
I think it's, uh, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but I think there is a pretty defined list of what's considered native, we can refer to something, I, I think we can find something.
So the ConCon have sort of a list of what they consider invasive?
But yes, definitely non-invasive, Ed.
Right.
So let's get, so.
Again, I don't think Scrub Oak was here when, uh.
You know, I don't want him to put.
I don't care about.
I know what you mean.
It's a list of invasive plants, does Nantucket have its own list?
Well, I'm sure the Conservation Commission has a list.
I would just reference that.
Yeah, cause I think.
Listed as invasive by the Nantucket Conservation Commission.
Well, my concern is if they put cactus in.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's not invasive, but it's not really native, from what I can see.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim.
Okay, so, those, 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 the Japanese black pines are listed in the buffer planting, we just said, we're not going to augment, uh.
Well, that's what you said, and I don't, I'm not gonna agree with that, because.
It's what I said.
If the buffer zone is thin in some locations, why wouldn't the developer have to augment, that doesn't make any sense to me to not touch the buffer zone.
Especially since we.
Augment it.
Okay, I, I'm fine with augmenting it, I just, we need to define it somehow, because we don't have a plan.
I, I've never counted, I don't know how thin it is, I mean, I don't know what it is. Well, doesn't this, aren't you saying each of these are, are each of these black lines?
Doesn't mean those areas is thin and needing augmentation.
I, I've worked on projects where you're doing a big, you're clearing, you've got a vermate, vermeer spade, you dig them up and you plant it.
All right, fine.
Some of them survive, some of them don't survive, you plant them again.
Let's not get hung up, so they have to augment the buffer.
Absolutely, and they can, and they can use the quantity that's in there, a hundred and nineteen trees.
That includes the street trees, though.
No, it doesn't include the street trees, that's just the buffer zone trees.
Hundred and nineteen.
Hundred and nineteen. Then we can.
The, the, the trees that are listed.
Pine is a problem, we'll remove that and replace it with a different tree.
Okay, so for the next meeting, Jim, will you do me a favor and come up with that list?
I will.
Thank you. Lisa, I think the, the trees you're seeing are the trees they identified by caliber, the bigger trees when we asked at one point.
Oh.
Eight-inch caliber, fifteen-inch caliber, they didn't do it on the lower, uh, buffer. A hundred trees in, yeah, whatever.
What page are you on that you're seeing all these?
L one, yeah, same thing, like, see these little, these little dots?
Yeah.
Those are, I think, existing trees that they identified at one point.
Oh, good.
Okay?
Where did you get the number, you said earlier, a hundred and forty-three trees?
He counted them.
I've counted, uh, I mean, I've counted two hundred and thirty.
Well, you're counting, I'm not counting, I was not counting the buffer trees.
They proposed planting, the street trees, a hundred and eleven new street trees, is what they proposed.
Right, and the plan shows a hundred and forty-three.
So let's.
And, and again, the two and a half to three inches, and the one and a half to two inches, I don't, I don't, I'll, I'll find the bylaw while we're doing this, but I don't think it meets the bylaw. The bylaw, I think, stipulates larger trees.
So you counted a hundred?
I counted a hundred and forty-three on the plan.
Call that the number, and, and we can say that they have to conform to the.
The plan.
That's shown on the plan.
The town bylaw.
Sizes have to conform to the town planning board.
So that's a hundred and forty-three new street trees.
There's a bylaw.
Just reference, yeah. Can we, can we just go back to intensity regulations that we talked about? I just wanna clarify, um, we, there is a, are we gonna have a ground cover ratio?
No, we're gonna, what I'm gonna do is take the plans and come up with a ground coverage for each type of unit, and we're gonna have a chart.
And then.
It's not gonna be a ratio like the rest of the.
Okay, and then, uh, how about setbacks, just as shown?
We talked about five feet on the, ten on the other, and the front is ten? I can't remember what we had in the front, the front yards.
The front yard setback? I think we said ten, I think we said ten.
Uh, yes, it's gonna be five and ten.
And what about the front?
You didn't get to that, you did have last meeting.
We did at one meeting where you came up with R ten or R one.
What, what was the question?
Front, uh, front setback.
Front yard setback.
I don't, I thought it was ten, but.
It's ten and five for, for size.
Yeah.
Rear, did you say five, the rear?
Yeah, I think rear was five.
I think front is ten.
They're currently showing a minimum of ten, I think, yeah.
I'm not sure where. I'm not sure where to go on the right way.
They look to be ten almost everywhere anyway.
Because when you think about, they could park them in front of these houses, that's gonna be at least twenty.
All these ones here are not ten. They're more like, um-
Did you get the, did you get them all at five or minimum? Twelve.
Oh, we were gonna tell, we're gonna do HDC stuff.
Yeah, we're getting a little bogged down.
Well, this is, I mean, yeah, but this is really important.
I know, we did talk about it at length last time, but we seem to be talking about it again.
Susan had a great, was it the R-five you had?
No, it was, it was-
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, maybe it was.
It was not ROH. It was like R-five, and that's where the five and ten came from.
Yeah, it's a five and ten. Everything other than ROH is five and ten.
R-five from your side is ten.
Yeah, that's, let's just move on.
Okay, so it's gonna be ten feet. And five and ten for the sides.
And I think that's, aren't five thousand square foot lots, I think that's pretty standard. That's mine.
We gotta keep moving.
The fourplex, there is none because it's one lot.
Ed, if you can't find it.
I'll find it. It'll take me a couple of days, but I'll find it.
So we'll make a note of, uh, caliper.
So I think, Ed, on, uh, it, with regard to the frontage on the fourplex, if they choose to do a separate lot, what would the minimum?
Lot, fourplexes? It's a good question. Um-
George, it said it's the outside.
Yeah, I would say let's not complicate it.
Seven to the same.
Ten?
No, frontage.
Oh, frontage. I thought we said, uh, if we're gonna do it for lots, I thought we said it was gonna be, um, hold on, I wrote it down.
You said seventy or seventy-five.
Oh, you made, you made me do it. Hold on.
We did seventy for the duplexes.
You did do that, except for duplexes.
Not for fourplexes.
We didn't, we didn't do it for the fourplexes. We said that.
Right, but if, but we're, we're also, there's an option that they could do a separate lot.
I think, wouldn't it be eighty? Because it was the same thing, like eighty?
Well, the ten thousand square foot lot is seventy-five feet of frontage in, in almost all the ten thousand square foot zones.
Then, then let's just say seventy-five.
If they did separate lots, they're opening them up. I mean, the beauty of a condo is that you don't have to address every diagram and setback.
Yeah.
But if they do?
If they do, then they have to redo all those waivers.
But we did say thirty feet required between the buildings anyway. Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I think-
Whatever you just said.
So seven, so if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, seventy-five feet of frontage, in most cases, there are some districts where it's actually fifty feet.
Right. Just do-
But typically seventy.
Let's just do seventy.
I thought we agreed on seventy.
That was for the duplexes.
For the duplexes.
Will the, will the fourplexes fit on seventy-five?
Well, it's just a minimum.
Yeah.
It's a minimum, so who cares? Right?
I just, I was gonna just scale, have them scale that. I don't think I'd as building.
So then it's seventy minimum for the, uh, the fourplex, too?
So, so-
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, so seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
What side of the front yard setback?
Ten?
Ten?
Yeah.
Some of these aren't ten now.
Right, but they can shift the building.
They, they can move the building back. Doesn't leave much of a background.
Well, again, there's a, things might change.
These lots are gonna change.
Hopefully. I can't find the tree thing. It's there. Okay, so. Is there anything else we want to talk to, talk about in terms? The rec building, we revisited, we're good with that. Um, just to go back to the trees, that, with regard to the waiver of that? Yeah.
It, it was one of those catchalls, to the extent applicable applicant requests that any permits, approvals, or waivers arising there under be issued by the ZBAC. So.
We're not gonna give them any waiver on the trees. It was, it, as Jim just said, it was more of a blanket, but I don't think they really, you know, they weren't specific about any waiver they needed, so, um-
So no.
Yeah, that, that keeps coming up a little bit confusing. It's, it, just, there's a distinction between waiving a requirement to go somewhere else-
Right.
And waiving a substantive requirement. So, in other words, if they're saying waive-
To the extent-
HDCs, you, yeah, we're, we're waiving that because you have to, but you're not waiving necessarily the standards that they would apply.
And that's how you view this, though?
Yes, that's how, right. But we need to look, you know, do, do you have requirements that you're satisfied with are going to protect you? And if, if so, then we make it subject to those.
Did we talk about the pool size?
But in, but in the absence of a specific requested waiver here, can we just say no? Because we don't have a specific request?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Well, you'll say that you're not, you'll need to look at the section. You'll have to specify, we're not giving a waiver of this section. Section shall apply.
Okay.
I'm just distinguishing between a waiver, you know, not, they shouldn't mix it up to the extent it's required or not required. It's just a matter that they don't have to go to other places to get these approvals, but you're still gonna address whether certain substantive requirements apply to each of these bylaw provisions.
All right. Did you wanna, in terms of the site plan, talk about the pool size?
Yeah. I mean, it's on your list, and I don't think we ever discussed it.
I thought we did. I thought, I, I was confused at one point in terms of its size, but it is on, on a plan.
Pool?
The pool.
This was, the size is fifty. The pool is six, uh, uh.
It's listed, and it would be-
Fifty by-
Twenty by forty-eight inch foot pool, which is on L2. And that's what submitted. I, I don't have a problem with that pool size, does anybody? Twenty by forty-eight.
Twenty by forty-eight, yeah. And that's consistent with the pool.
I don't know. And I don't think we need to get into the building code requirements. Obviously, it needs to be fenced, which they show, actually. Um, now, I added in my notes something about, are we good with the pool then? Like that? No, no spa in the pool. It's just a pool? Or do, do we want to get into more detail, Lisa? Are you good with that size?
No, that's fine. I still can't find it on L2, but-
L3, L3, I think it was.
What's the square footage of it?
Twenty by-
No, I'm sorry. It's L, L, L2, it's right up here. Twenty eight, twenty by forty-eight.
Oh, God. Twenty by forty-eight, okay.
So what does that mean?
That's just the size of the pool.
Nine sixty, nine hundred and sixty square.
But we're not doing it based on square footage, though, are we? The pool itself? No.
No, I was just comparing it to other-
I mean, it's a decent sized pool. It's not too small. It's not-
Do you want us to condition it to have handicap access? That would be the issue every day, whatever.
No, I'm shocked.
Is what?
It's their pool.
That's, oh, that's big.
Do you remember the issue with the handicap access with the beachfront pool? I don't know if you wanna-
We already discussed this. I thought we went by a state standard.
Isn't that a code requirement?
It should be, but with certain sized pools, I don't understand.
Their pool's teeny.
I don't know what the size limit is.
That's what they asked for.
Didn't we have a handicap issue at, uh, Target Square?
That's what I'm asking.
That's what she just said, yeah. Um, yes, we did. I don't think we did. I think that the, I think that the homeowners did. There was a homeowner who wanted handicap access.
They complied.
We gave them a lift.
Right. I don't know what, that, that is handicap access to a pool, I believe. That's what the high school pool has.
Yeah, I think we have that same thing at North.
All the fortyBs they work on have to, didn't they?
I would think that's a code issue. If you're providing a quasi-public pool.
It's probably a state or federal code.
Yeah, it's-
All, all common use- Oh, it is. Areas have to, have to satisfy eighty-eight requirement.
Right. All right, so that's the pool they asked for.
Cool, it's good, fine.
We're good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, um-
What's that one say? Pool size, hours of operation.
We had eight AM to dusk.
That's what you had?
That's what we had, that's what I notes saved from last time.
Okay.
Say again?
Eight AM to dusk.
Um, I don't know if this is in our purview. It drives me bananas in my neighborhood, but it's limited to-
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Sorry. I don't, I don't know if this is in our purview, but, and it drives me nuts in my neighborhood, but the pool, do we have the authority or do we want to limit it, like age? Like, it used to be twelve and under had to be accompanied by an adult. Then it was fourteen. Now, now it's sixteen and under. I mean-
That's gotta be a code issue. I mean, that, that's not, it's either, it's a homeowner's-
Okay. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because it's something that I know drives me nuts in my neighborhood.
I mean, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
Okay. You just talked about some detailed stuff last night.
We, um, okay.
Then you have on your list public park, uh, park space. Any-
Well, there was a discussion at one point as to whether or not the open green space is public space or if it is private space that is only usable by the development.
And is it the latter?
I, well, that's what they want, that it's private. I don't know what is normal. Is there any normal? Does it matter? No.
Normal is that it belongs to the people who live there.
Yeah, I'd say it's private. I mean, I think it would be, I think that would be a forty, like just making a fortyB different than everyone else.
I mean, now, if I were putting a fortyA in, I could designate that space as private.
Yeah, private roads, private pool. And plus, especially if there's a pool, you don't have random people coming in and out. Like, no, I mean, it's a hazard.
Perspective of, there, there's another concern how they're addressed from a subdivision concern. A lot of times, a board will decide whether a public park or space is required.
Right, that's a different issue.
And then they, they conduct an analysis. So I, I don't know, have you done that type of thing in other projects? Again, you don't want to treat this unequally.
No.
We haven't.
Well, may I?
Yes.
Interesting, I recently found out they realize that Beach Plum granted limited access, and I think in exchange for some membership fee, to people who lived in a certain, a certain distance from their development to use the pool.
For a fee?
Yeah. It came to my attention because somebody bought a home, a taken-out place, and they found out that they had, were able to go use the pool and facilities. There's also other nice facilities there that people want to use. Um-
Is that a commercial activity?
Is that allowed under their comp terms?
Yeah.
I think, I think that's in the HOA. I-
I, I wouldn't be surprised if that was a negotiated point at the, after the, when, they got sued.
I think it is in the comp room, actually.
There was a action by the neighbors.
Oh.
When that was approved. I didn't sit on it, but, and I don't know the details.
Could I ask a question? Are these gonna be, remain private roads? Would the town ever-
I don't think the town will take, will not accept it.
So if it's private road?
Yeah.
I think it should be private development.
Absolutely.
Now, having said that, I don't think they can offer memberships to the pool or rec building. I think that's a reasonable condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No outside memberships. And it is a tiny pool.
Why, uh, I mean, the way I come down on all this, if there's a homeowner association that, that they can decide what they want to do.
But doesn't that outside membership deal with traffic? I mean, I appreciate that, but it deals with traffic.
I don't agree with you on that one, Jim. I, I do agree with you in large measure that the homeowners association is gonna deal with all of their, their homeowner problems, which there will be many. Um, but not, they can't open a commercial, they can't decide, oh, this will be a good idea to have a health club membership.
Exactly. We'll go against the Westmore and the Great Hall for the winter membership.
So wait, I just, I'm stuck on Beach Plum. Did they, they, so they offered, it's not paying, it's part of a-
I have no factual knowledge of what happened there. I'm thinking maybe that's what happened. It was, so we would-
But is that a reason?
Really, the only thing is, it's relevant really only from the perspective I'm giving it to you. If you've done it on other projects, you've addressed public space and access, but you can't treat them differently. So I would just leave it as they're proposing that it's private to the development.
Right. Do we need to make the mention of no, well, we did say no commercial?
I think we need to be specific.
You have that on the-
Rec building.
On the rec building. And we could say it on-
I think we should say it on the pool, too. No, no club memberships or pool memberships.
We should be specific, because they were trying to, you know, that building was being designed for something beyond a neighborhood rec building.
Sure, I'm sure we can throw some condition in there about no outside use, no, you have to be part of the homeowners association to use it.
To be, yeah, to use it.
I mean, you, you don't want to say no memberships, because in essence, the homeowners are the members.
Yeah.
I mean, no, like for sale outside.
By saying limited to the members of the-
Yeah, limited to the members.
Yeah.
Yeah, and their guests.
Yep. Okay, no spa.
Okay.
I can't get on the bylaws. It keeps kicking me off.
I can't find, well, I'll find the tree thing. I found it before, so.
So the, I looked at the tree, the, the waiver they're looking for doesn't address-
No, that's-
Caliper stuff.
Yeah, that's a different one. This is in like subdivisions or something, the subdivision rules. It's not in the, I think, and-
No, it's just had to do with the-
It's, which I can't find, but I'll-
Town trees and things like that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
All right, um, does the main, I had a question here. Does the maintenance building on a lot without a dwelling need a waiver? Or was that bylaw changed that you can now have it? Do you know, George, offhand?
No.
No, I don't know.
That hasn't been changed.
Eleanor, you don't know that?
Could you, I'm-
You can't have an accessory structure without a dwelling unit on a lot.
Does that need a waiver?
Uh, you can have a garage on a residential, in certain districts without-
Without a dwelling unit?
Being accessory, yeah.
Yeah, they just changed it.
Yeah, that changed.
But this is different, because this is a maintenance building.
Well, what laws can you have?
What do you mean it's changed? We're, we're applying whatever bylaws are in effect at the time of the application.
I, I, at one point, you couldn't have an accessory building on a lot that didn't have a dwelling.
But, but what, what was in effect at the time of the application? Do, whatever that-
I'm, I'm not even debating that point. I'm saying, does this, does having, does the maintenance building on its own lot need a waiver?
I don't know, because I need to know what the bylaw was in effect at the time.
Well, none of us are gonna know that right now.
They didn't ask for a waiver.
They didn't ask for it. I'm sort of bringing up that point. Do, do we address that now? If they need it, or?
Yes.
So even though we recognize the fact that they didn't ask for it?
Right. If they didn't ask for it, it doesn't, so you don't want to, you don't want to approve something and then, you know, waive the fact that you could have imposed it.
Well, I'm not trying to get, get them on this, I'm just saying, I just want to do the right thing, so.
Nobody has a problem with a maintenance building.
No, I'm saying, if it needs it, we should research it.
Eleanor can research it.
Eleanor, will you research that one? Please?
Whether or not the maintenance building could be on a lot?
Yes.
Well, even the rec.
At the time of the application.
Yeah, it's at the time of the application. What about the rec building? Doesn't it need a waiver to be on its own lot without a dwelling?
Right.
I think so.
I don't think they asked.
We need to just confirm what the bylaw was at the time of the application.
That's all I'm bringing up. These are questions. I don't have the answers.
What did that change?
So Eleanor, we can look at that together.
A few people own like antique cars and they wanted to just have a garage for them.
Okay, whatever, okay, boom.
I have to look that up, I have no idea.
Any of these condo units, they don't show, the condo buildings don't show any onsite drainage. We might have talked about that, but they all, all the roof drainage has to be.
Guttered, we said.
Well, yeah, we did, we did talk about, the, the individual house lots are guttered to.
Onsite.
Onsite infiltration.
And the multifamilies don't show that.
I believe at the last hearing that we could speak to, Don, he said that that was going to be the case. So what we need to do when we look at the fourplexes as the HTC is simply stipulate that they need gutters. And on the houses.
And a drainage system.
And a drainage.
And an onsite, individual onsite.
Even the duplexes don't show the onsite drainage.
They don't show anything.
Is that a local requirement or DEP requirement?
I think it's not, it wouldn't be a, not a local requirement.
I would have to look through John's chesties.
Okay, so the easiest thing, make sure there's a condition in there that says all, whatever.
All buildings should have an onsite.
Must have, right, shall have. Wait, we had, we had talked about units must have gutters, must be maintained, all roof water drainage must be directed to some surface drainage system independent of the roadway.
Right.
And that's basically all we.
Yeah, so we talked about it.
Oh, you, oh.
That's good.
There were some things we talked about in terms of, and I'm sorry to say I did not read the zoning bylaw when I was on vacation, but spots, parking spots too close to intersections, things like that.
Oh, yeah.
That you had brought up.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, looking at the plan, there is a, a bylaw that talks about, uh, parking spaces being a certain minimum distance from.
Yeah, driveways, well, in this case.
More intersections of.
Of roads, right?
Yeah, did I have that in my notes?
I have it in mine, I don't know. I just had spots too close to intersections, question mark, so I think it's the.
It was intersections, it wasn't driveways.
It's, it's.
No, but wasn't it driveways?
Driveways too close to.
Driveways too close to intersections, that, that was definitely, uh, and I don't think they asked for that bylaw, I mean, uh, waiver. So again, what do we do when, when they didn't ask for a waiver? We're not trying to get them on it, but.
Well, tip, I mean, the best way is really you specify what waivers are being granted, and then all other, you know, bylaws and requirements shall apply. But if you, if you have one that, you know, you, you know you want to, you know, call out to them, it would be helpful to put it in the decision.
Okay.
But you know what I'm saying? In other words, you're, you're doing it in, in, in an affirmative way to, to show what waivers are specifically being granted. Everything else applies.
But if.
So even if you didn't think of something, later on, it can create an enforcement issue. If you didn't grant a waiver of a certain provision, it's not mentioned in your, in your permit, but you can let them close that because you haven't granted a waiver of it.
But are we blessing it if we, if the plan shows a driveway?
That's what I was concerned.
Well, that's why, well, we should just put in a condition that there has to be a minimum.
No driveway access shall be located closer than twenty-five feet from the curb line of an intersecting street, measured from the nearest point of the driveway.
And, and the other.
And what is, what is that by law?
Safeguard about it is, you're, you're gonna have a provision specifying that you're not, you're not granting waivers as may be reflected on the plan.
So we are gonna say that, so.
We are gonna say that in addition to what waivers you're specifying.
All right, so we, as a courtesy, we've let them know.
Most developers will want a, a conclusion to the conditions that say, if we forgot to ask for certain waivers, but we've shown, uh, the condition on the plans, then those shall be approved. We can't do that here because.
We're not doing that.
So we have to do what George said.
Yeah.
Exhibit A is a list of waivers, that's it.
That's it, yeah.
And, and to the extent the plan may show an inconsistency, the, the list is.
Supersedes, right. Well, that's what I was getting at, because I noticed a couple of things that.
But it would be good to.
Which, by the way, if, if Eleanor decided the right section, that the waiver has been requested.
Not for that.
Oh, it hasn't? Oh, driveway minimum, yeah, okay.
It's in the same.
Twenty point one, two B.
Yeah.
Two, twenty point one, point two B, point two B?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a sub, sub.
One, subject, subsection what?
Two B.
Two B, not B two. Okay.
So just, just to this point, one more, one more time. When we do encounter something like the maintenance building that the waiver wasn't asked for, and we're not necessarily trying to catch them on it, if you will, we can, do we just affirmatively state that we recognize that this waiver wasn't requested, but we are okay with it, if we are okay with it?
Yeah, I would, I would address it.
Okay, so would I, I'm just.
I would put at the end, in addition to the waivers, in addition to actions taken on the waivers requested by the applicant, we've, uh, we are aware that the following additional waivers will be, would, would be required.
Okay. And of course, we're not responsible for noting everything that might have missed.
No, you're being good, but again, that shows.
That's why you're putting the.
That shows reasonableness.
Right.
I want to show reasonableness in the.
Can you stick that again, that was very.
Oh, in addition to the, uh, actions taken on the waivers requested by the applicant, the board realizes that the following additional waivers will be required in granting, who grants the following waivers.
Okay. All right. Where do we want to go from here? We want to, uh, we talked about the landscaping in large measure for what we have. They've also given us individual landscape plan examples. At one point, Jim, you had talked about wanting to limit their plant choice on those. Are you going there?
I, yeah, I, I guess, you know, again, non-invasive would be, on that, would be the most important thing.
All right, so you were gonna get us that list. And we would just include it. Uh, the buffer zone, dumpster areas we talked about, I mean, I, by some of the steps that we've taken today, a lot of other things are gonna, gonna sort of fall into place, I think, some snow removal area.
We had that listed last week.
Needs to be at least designated.
For a snowstorm.
For what, like a four-inch?
Snowstorm or has to be removed off-site.
Right, uh, the dumpster area, look, we determined was adequate, um, buffer zone we talked about. What about materials for the curbs and the sidewalks?
So what do they have in here?
I think they, they've suggested asphalt and.
Chip seal.
And, uh, and asphalt, I think.
What did you require, what did you require on Satchin's path?
It's asphalt and Cape Cod burn. I think this is a slightly different project. Granite curbing and, uh, rec, which is what I would prefer to say.
Blue stone walks, chip seal driveway is what the typical house says.
Right. How do we feel about the?
Bracken, Bracken plan doesn't show any construction detail or else.
No, this is on the landscape plan. Roadways asphalt, curbs concrete, driveways native stone, sidewalks chip seal, pool deck, blue stone, picnic area, concrete pavers.
Which page, page is that on?
L one, bottom left.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I, and I would think the developer, quite frankly, would want us something other than concrete. I believe in, in our discussions, it came up that there was the feeling of trying to make this a more rural, you know, fit into the neighborhood by making the curbs con- concrete or something.
Well.
I didn't quite get that.
I think that, we also talked about that relative to the landscape. It wasn't necessarily non-invasive, but what we didn't want is that these lots to look like Woodbury Lane, sort of with all private hedges and, not that they will, but.
Yeah.
But anyway, um, I think the condominium or the multifamily's walk should match the single family. They should all be blue stone.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Consistency.
Yeah, the walks.
Yeah.
That's on the individual lots. I, I guess I'm talking more about the road and its curb and, and, and the sidewalks.
That's hard, because down there, other than the bike path, you don't really have sidewalks, right?
No, but I mean, they've just, you know, put forth the notion that this is gonna be a walk, and you can walk to the pool, you can walk around, you can.
Right, no, I'm just trying to think of what's a, a material that's appropriate in that context.
Well, this, this subdivision is not, this development is not, not appropriate in the context, so, um, I don't know that you necessarily downgrade the material choice because of that.
What are you specifically talking about?
Well, curbs and sidewalks.
So are you suggesting?
Do we want them concrete or asphalt or rec and granite?
So Satchin's path, we did, um.
It's, it's Cape Cod burn.
Yeah, which is, which is basically asphalt, and then what, concrete?
Asphalt.
The sidewalks are asphalt too?
I believe so. I mean, I think part of the reason that Rugged Scott looks good is you will go in there and it's got granite curbs and, and brick sidewalks. It looks like it was, it was.
Yeah.
So, all right, that would be my druthers, but.
I, I'm with you on that.
That's, that's fine.
As I know, HTC has chimed in previously on how I'm supposed to lay the brick down, what kind of brick I'm supposed to use for driveway, sidewalks, and so forth, at least I was, but.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we could go with Ed's version and, and be fine.
Yeah, it's formal, but I agree with you, it's better to have the formality than have something that looks, um, half-hazard and unthought out.
Did the HTC comment on that, on these ones?
Because, you know, they, we only got to go in front of the HTC once, and it was, and all we talked about was the site plan. We never got to any details, really.
Yeah.
I mean, asphalt chip seal looks okay, if it's done well, it's, it's kind of a nice finish.
What color is it?
You can make it any color you want, you can chip seal with, you know, like a native stone.
I, I think I would prefer that, certainly to asphalt.
The regular asphalt, I agree.
Yeah.
Brick pavers might be a little formal.
Well, that's my only thought.
Yeah.
They have chip seal listed, right?
For the sidewalks.
Yeah. The curbs is concrete.
If, 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 if the sidewalks are chip sealed, then the main roadway ought to be chip sealed too, and they can certainly do that, that's not a big deal.
It's not expensive.
It is a maintenance thing. You, you have to do it every ten years or something.
It is a maintenance thing, yeah, especially if, you know, if it's done well, yeah, it, it is a maintenance thing, but it still looks better.
It definitely looks better.
Even long-term, it looks better, someone's, you know, someone's stone stays in place, it almost looks like a gravel.
Well, let me ask you though, if you were, and I know that this isn't a normal development, but if you had a normal subdivision there, they could do asphalt.
Yes, they could.
No, not necessarily, the planning board would stipulate what you'd put in.
Yeah, but how do they?
That's why you see one subdivision with this, and then right down the road, the two sidewalks meet, or they don't meet, and one's concrete and one's, one's rec, and it looks like poop, but, uh.
Well, that was, I'm trying to see if there's any sort of consistency that we can refer to in that area, what the.
Well, I don't, again, I don't, I don't think there is, because this is unprecedented, other than, I guess you, you could say.
What about concrete curbs, which aren't bad, they're better, you know, they're better than asphalt, Cape Cod burn, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And chip seal, a native colored chip seal on both the sidewalks and the roadway.
All right, because the interesting thing is, I think the developer originally wanted brick and, and granite, but he, he, they heard the human cry to keep it rural, even though it's clearly a, uh, the scale of a, of a small city. So, I, I, you know, I.
I think the nice thing about the chip seal, the world is more natural.
You certainly give them the option.
The color is nicer.
Does it hold up to a snowplow? Not great, but it's, you know, it's, you know, it is a maintenance issue.
The option is a good idea.
You have to maintain it to some degree, sure.
So we probably should mention.
If you wanted to look maintenance, like a stone finish all the time, you have to maintain it fairly regularly.
You gotta maintain, you have to maintain anything. I mean, you put brick down, you're gonna maintain it, because the weeds grow up through it, so. I, I, I'm, I'm happy with the choice.
It kills everything.
What's that round?
No.
I don't want to be talking to Monsanto like.
We're not gonna do round, round up.
No, uh, okay, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on the fifth, either or?
Either or, either, either a native stone chip seal finish on the sidewalks and the roadway.
Right.
Or they can do.
With concrete, uh.
Concrete curb?
Curbs.
I think concrete curb is okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with concrete. I don't like asphalt.
Asphalt, asphalt, asphalt burn is cuckoo.
Yeah.
And they break apart, I would say.
Yeah.
You know, they don't know how to do it down here.
Put that in your notes, cuckoo.
I'm sorry.
That's a technical term.
So the choice on the roadways and, and the curbing and the sidewalk, Jeff?
Correct.
The sidewalks is, uh.
Either a native stone chip seal finish, or you can do a conventional asphalt roadway and a brick sidewalk.
And if the bricks, and, and they can also use granite curbing if they want.
Of course they can, sure. So it can be, so the curbing can be either, either granite or concrete.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah.
Vertical slope?
Vertical.
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 Granite, granite curve.
Vertical granite or concrete curbing.
I'm good with it.
All the walkways should be blue stone.
Yes.
We're not gonna have some, some blue stone paver walkways and some chip seal walkways, right?
Yeah, no, and, and it needs to be, uh, now, having said that, I don't want to get into they have to use, you know, two by twos.
Yeah, no.
No, no, that's up to them, but they're just some material, blue stone.
What about when blue stone goes out?
Right.
You have a style.
Come back and change it.
All right, blue stone, and, and it has to be consistent, obviously, across the board, um, affordable and market.
And single family and multi-unit.
All the, all the walkways have to be the same.
Maybe it could be Gojin stone, I don't really care, it just has to be.
What will the driveways be?
They say here, native stone.
Which is, I think.
What's that?
Gravel.
It's a gravel.
Gravel.
I'm okay with that. The aprons?
They should certainly have an apron, you need to have an apron.
Well, you have to by code. So.
It doesn't say.
See, the apron should come to the property line.
And that would be?
That, that would be the same surface as the roadway.
Yeah.
Which would be either asphalt or a chip, or a chip seal.
It may need, in some instances, it may need to go past the roadway, uh, it, it needs to be certain, uh, it needs to meet the code, which I think is ten feet. It needs to meet the code, which I think is ten feet. Needs to meet the code. I think it's ten feet in length, ten feet in width, or whatever the width, then it can be swept, and it can splay out to fifteen.
While we're on driveways, it's not necessarily materials related. But, uh, very often there'll be a condition that says, what you see is what you get. You, you can't increase the number of parking spaces. I know that's been a case in Satchams. This developer, small lots, we all think that the parking spaces are probably. Uh, lower than might be necessary, so you don't want people coming back and hate of putting in more parking spaces. I mean, that's, that's a question.
Well, I, it, you're restricted, Ed, the, the, the double driveway, and they have to meet this. Code issue too, we talked about it briefly. The width of the road is only fifteen feet. So the, the one car has to go like that.
Right.
The other one's straight. If you only have two and you come back and say, we wanna stack two more. I mean, I don't have, I don't think I have a problem with that, but if they say, we wanna widen that driveway, that would be a no. Pretty much across, and that, that's townwide, you can't do that. So, does that? Adequately.
You'd wanna look at the segment and see what that, I mean, is it tight sites as they are? And just see how you feel about it.
No, I, I, I hear you, if, if the plan shows a stacked, it has to remain stacked. Because if they go to unsta- uh, tandem or side by side, they've taken away a street parking space.
In some cases, some cases not, because there's no parking on some of the streets.
They've got a car closer to the house next door.
Yeah, no, I, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's no parking on any of these streets, so they could easily do a side by side. Without taking away parking, but.
Okay, it, speaking of parking, at one point we had really dealt, died, dived in or dove in.
Delved in?
Delved in. To parking and the number of spaces that were required overall. Now, obviously, things have sort of morphed if the, the unit count maybe is slightly different. So, how do we, how do we wanna deal with that?
They were asking for more than was required. Although we're saying three spaces on the six bedroom, on the five bedroom houses, so that's gonna change, that's different from what they were talking about. It seems like the community building needs more than eight spaces, I mean, that, that would be the one place where I think it's inadequate, but. And they're asking, they're providing two hundred and thirty and the code requires one ninety-eight. So there, thirty-two spaces beyond zoning. So are they even asking, they're not even asking for waiver from the parking?
No, but that's because of that big park.
Can, can, can we reasonably impose a condition that says you have to have X number of extra park? Uh, free, free parking spaces, you know, park out on the street?
Why, why are you doing it?
Just because the bylaw is inadequate and we've, we've heard complaints at, uh, other. Developments. People parking on the road, et cetera, et cetera.
Abrams Quarry doesn't have, uh, a, like, street parking, does it?
Abrams Quarry?
Or no, the, um.
Rugged Scott.
No, Abrams Quarry does not, so Rugged Scott does.
That Abrams Quarry is the one that people were complaining that it would make it difficult for the fire trucks to come around, cause people were parking on the street.
Abrams Quarry, the one that was done twenty, twenty years ago.
Yeah, they park them on common, I don't know.
Okay, no, I'm, then I'm thinking of the other one, is that Rugged Scott, the one that we were just talking about with the?
Rugged Scott has no parking, um, in certain areas because people park. Uh, what's the street that you drive in, Rugged Road?
Woodlily.
No, not Woodlily, to get, like, in between, like, Rugged Scott's in the middle, and there are two streets. Scots, Scots Way, people park. Across the street on Scots, in between, like, the two roads that are, like, Woodlily and Blazing Star or whatever. Because there's, they can't park.
So illegally, they're parking there.
Well, I don't, I'm just saying, that's where they park.
Did, did we ever get a memo from the fire chief about accessibility around these corners?
No.
No, I reached out to him and he, uh, it was actually the associate, Bob Bates, and I sent him plans again, I did not hear back.
Well, I think it's kind of important.
Important to get that.
I know you're trying, but if we could just kinda expedite.
I'll call Bob tomorrow. Not that I'm saying that Eleanor's not doing her, the job, but. I was not implying that at all, I'm reluctant to call, but I will.
Yeah, I can attest that when Eleanor wants somebody, she, she will call one several times on many different mediums.
Especially if she needs a signature.
Luckily, we all have caller ID, oh, no.
So because they're asking for more parking than is required by zoning, then us for waiver, we can't really address that.
That, that was my question.
I think, uh, I think we should leave it at that because you're trying to deal with the practical problem of. More people living in a house and. Than should.
Not necessarily that, that should, but if.
The fundamental issue is that. More people are living there than.
No, I'm not making that point at all, I'm, I'm not saying that there are going to be twenty people in a five bedroom house, I'm saying that. Americans continue to love their cars, including on Nantucket, so, a family of. Five, if they have a teenager in the house, then, at least on Nantucket, it has three cars, if not four. Um, so that's all I'm saying. Now, go ahead.
I was gonna say, to Jim's point, I just, we glossed over it, but, um. No, what do we say, no, something, no use, no ha- no habitation, habitable space, habitable stays in the attic.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm missing it, I thought you were trying, I thought you were concerned about traffic and. Increasing it, so why are you providing more spaces? I thought.
It's just a, well, just a reality thing, now again, if you don't have a space, you can't park there, and I guess you don't, don't park, you leave.
I think we'd leave that alone, I think we just, if they're meeting the requirements.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Uh, just, uh, going back to the driveway thing, there is a request. To, uh. Waive the ten foot minimum, or we?
That was their original request, they then modified it. Yeah. Alright, so parking, we're good, buffers zone, we talked about dumpster area, fire safety, we're still, um. We're reliant on. Somebody to get back to us, and if they don't, we're reliant on George to write some well crafted condition about.
That was specifically agreed to by the developer to allow that to come in.
Yeah, well, and it was agreed to by Mr. Bates to, to get that to us, so, maybe you could call as well? Full press?
Yeah.
Gibson and ask her to call, Mr. Bates.
Oh, okay. I don't really like to call people's boss, unless I call your. You wanna do it?
I did it right after the public hearing was closed, and I had not the minutes to get back and.
Yeah, he might've, he might've had other things on.
Yeah.
I don't wanna make him look like he didn't respond.
Okay.
Well, he's watching it on TV right now.
I know, exactly.
What about the mailboxes?
I know, I talked about that.
We never talked about.
We talked about, I think my notes, we said something.
We said the space that they had provided was inadequate for shipping and delivery.
Yeah.
I think that's a level of detail that, um.
We don't really wanna get into.
It's gonna be in the rec building for everybody.
That's what they say.
And then the trash pickup, will it be individual for the single family houses, I just can't remember.
I have no idea, and again, I don't.
The, the one thing about trash.
Internal, okay.
This is one of my Ted Pities. You, you can't have the trash barrels visible from the.
Yeah, we have that note somewhere, I have a note of that in here.
That they've gotta be in the sheds or behind the building.
Or the neighbor.
Why? I mean, is there a bylaw about that, or?
It just looks terrible.
For a development like this.
I think that gets into, uh, you know, again, regulating if my neighbor wants to be a, you know.
I, I agree.
That's an HOA.
That's an HOA thing, HOA thing, I think. I agree with you?
Individual law have to be, I mean, the trash barrels have to be in some sort of enclosure.
Yeah, it would be enclosure, we can say that.
Oh, that's fine. An enclosure's fine.
Yeah, then HOA can manage.
I think that's.
Let the HOA manage that.
I think we got more important things to deal with.
I think the trash is more important for the, uh, not even the duplexes.
The multi-family.
The fourplex, well, maybe not, I mean, they have their, put them up by their door and get up, go to Marine Home Center and buy one of those things.
Well, the other thing that by, by, by.
They're not having a dumpster now, cause they don't have a huge condo.
George, back to your question about, you know, why we think this meets better site planning, um, norms. On the fourplexes, it will now en- enable them potentially to have a, a shed for the fourplex, where. If I'm in a fourplex and I have a bike or kayak, I have a place to put it. Other than weave it into the basement somehow, in a little labyrinth.
They can have a fourplex, um. Shed.
Yeah.
We, we did have requirements that no, no units to be solely in the basement.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, that, that remains, no, no units one hundred percent in the basement.
And we, and we came up with a figure of how many bedrooms can be in, no more than, let's see, one bedroom. Has to be above grade for every unit.
Did we say one bedroom above grade or no more than one?
I thought we said no more than one bedroom.
I don't know.
Bedroom must be above grade.
That's what I had.
Okay.
At least abo- one bedroom above grade. Well, I, 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 I still get back to if you're a, you know, you are a couple and you have a one bedroom unit, and then you have a couple of guest rooms in the basement, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's one of the one.
Easier because their fourplex model has a three bedroom unit with two bedrooms. In a little.
Well, and several of the house plans have.
Oh, but those are the eight. Those were the eight plaques, oh, oh, the house plans.
Yeah.
Right.
Have, have more than one bedroom in the ba- basement.
Their eight unit building A and D model had the units that were.
Yeah, but that, those are gone anyway. And we don't have to address the maximum building height, should we just put that in?
No, but I think, again, in, in George's, uh, um, draft. That was part of the discussion, clearly, that, that, the buildings didn't meet the height restriction, there were units one hundred percent in the basement.
Right, but we're gonna write that as an requirement, just that they're not getting any waivers for building height.
No.
Cause they've requested one.
Definitely wants to explain why you found the eight unit buildings unacceptable.
Right.
There were, yeah.
There's, uh. The Board of Health Regulation related to bedrooms, are we allowing that?
Yeah, that, I don't think that waiver is necessary, and can we also find that a waiver isn't necessary? Or you would just?
No.
No.
It, it, it's an, it's the catchall to the extent applicable. Not a specific. Uh, request.
I'm emailing Marcus to find the bylaw, cause I've been looking for it and I can't find it.
On the trees?
On the trees and then the, the use.
Cool.
But I'm listening.
I would've been, I did, I saw it, uh, okay, so the Board of Health, the Board of Health discussion came about, Jim, when we were. Concerned about the number of, of bedrooms in a building and whether it exceeded. The, uh, the number that was. Met code, but it was a septic code issue, it was not a sewer code, you know, so.
But there's also some definitions of bedroom.
Yeah, but if you, if you're tied into the sewer, there's no maximum bedroom count.
Okay, I, I.
The bottom line is, it didn't, it, it didn't.
If there were a sewer moratorium and you could only get four bedrooms per tie-in, then it might become an issue or something. Like when they had that ensconce that there was a.
Yeah.
Moratorium.
So, I don't, I don't think it's applicable. But they, they put that in on the revised waiver request, because we brought it up.
Right.
As, as, sort of a, anyway. Uh, we're not gonna get into the, I don't think, any sort of, uh, uh, the, the fourplexes obviously will be. Not obviously, but they will be condos, but.
Okay, get to the ownership things.
And or the whole year round or governance, or none of that. I don't, I don't want to. What about the notion of the fact that they, uh, did mention, um. Renting them up to thirty days? Can we restrict them since they steadfastly said they were for year round housing? And, uh.
I.
I mean.
I think that's important, I would, yeah, put that in, they said they were gonna do that, but then Tucker picked up that. On the revised explanation, that thirty day limitation on renting was not included.
Okay.
Which leads me to.
Wait, what was that, sorry?
In their original, uh, summary of the year round residence program. One of the requirements was that the units would not be rented, could only be rented on a monthly basis and for not more than. One month annually. They submitted a revised, I think when they submitted the, um. Around the time that they submitted the opinion. That thirty day restriction disappeared according to Tucker's, I never went back and read it again.
I have to say I'm in favor of it disappearing.
No, if they disappear, then they can rent it unlimited.
I know, but, 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 but it's supposed to be for year round residents, so the teacher who gets to buy a house. And then can move out in the summer so that she can pay her mortgage the rest of the year, doesn't, she's restricted from doing that, like, how's she gonna afford to even buy this?
I don't see where, unless, I, I would defer to. Well, does it become an Airbnb?
Yeah, I, I have a problem.
Thing, I defer to add on housing details, but I, I don't see how you. Of, of, affordable units, you have the jurisdiction to, to have, you know, have the certain requirements. And you're dispersing them, I don't see how you have the jurisdiction to tell the mar- the affordable.
The market.
The owner what to do.
Right, I thought we decided that the, that the year round restriction was none of, where we.
So, I guess, I guess my point, George, is that, you know, they, the whole reason for this increased density.
Right.
Is providing year round housing. And now, we're gonna say you can rent it year round to whomever, whenever you want?
No, I thought we're only talking about the ability to rent it for a month.
Well, that, that's disappeared.
Right.
So, if it's disappeared, it means that it's unlimited.
But have you, have you imposed, what did you do on your? It would have to be, what they said was.
There was definitely.
Resident, they have to be resident for at least six.
Six months.
Six months of the year, so you can rent it six months, yeah.
Yeah, but that's.
That certainly, I think, a little broad and, I, I don't think meets the spirit of.
But what have you done on the?
I believe Satcham's path was, uh, was restricted.
No Satcham path.
Was restricted, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, they put it on air, I think Airbnb or one of the.
Yeah, some of my friends rent it out.
Satchams or rugged?
Rugged.
Rugged, I believe rugged, there may, I believe there are restrictions there, but they don't necessarily adhere to them. Whether they're individual.
What's different here is that, in addition to market and affordable, we have this sort of middle tier, the year round residents.
But I, I.
BHCD does not allow you to rent affordable units.
Yeah.
If you do rent them and you make any money, you have to pay it back.
How is that enforced, by the way?
It's.
Not well.
The Satcham's path, the Satcham's path rental thing, I think, was not that it was fair market or affordable, as far as I remember, it was. That they had put bedrooms in the basement in places they weren't supposed to, so it was like a, they were renting it as like a seven or eight bedroom house, right? And it was.
Oh, that was, you mean Rugged Scott?
Rugged Scott, sorry, what am I, keep calling it, Satcham, sorry, Rugged Scott, that was, I think, the issue there, and, um.
You might be right.
But yeah, I think for Satchams, we said no rentals, and I also think for the. Year round restriction, I thought we had decided, or at least clarified, that that wasn't something that we could. Like, if they decide, if the developer decides to put that on there, then that's on them, but it's not something for us to regulate or hack to regu- regulate. It's a part, it's just a thing they're, they're encumbering themselves with.
Right, we're not dealing with that at all.
Yeah.
Well, it, it isn't, I, I think that's how we came down, but it is an interesting point since it was, was the linchpin of the density.
Yeah, I think, but like we said.
Into his. Decision, into the decision.
Right.
Of, of what? There was a check, well, it, it, here's what was initially proposed, that's evolved. And, and now these, could be based upon the guidelines presented by the applicant. Permanent resident is defined as, one, you don't have, you don't have to have been from Nantucket to get one of these houses. And you only have to live there for a hundred and eighty-one days to be considered a resident, so you could rent it for the balance of the time. That's all.
But that's true of all the fair market homes, right?
I don't see why we have to get into.
I think it's a sticky wicket and it gets, it's a problem for us if we get into that. I think they're gonna, I, I think personally in the end, I don't think they're gonna have the year round restriction. I don't think anyone's gonna do, I don't think, I think the year round restriction's gonna go away. Because it's not, it's not feasible.
I think a lot of those are gonna be rented, I think they're gonna be, Airbnb, it's, it's perfect place with a recreation center. And, um.
That's sort of.
But that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of what, what happens out here, I mean.
Alright.
Right?
Let's not sink into total cynicism.
Me? No.
Not me.
None of us.
I don't think it's a bad thing, I'm not being cynical about it, it's just.
I, I think it's disappointing.
It is disappointing, and it probably will happen, but, uh, I think the consensus is that we.
Can't do anything about it.
Nearly, I mean, again, I, it would have been refreshing and nice if we had. Cause we have done this in the past with other forty Bs, sort of gotten into the, uh, homeowners docks and whatnot, where it was all clear. But we're not there, so, let's move on. So we talked about that future building, we talked about that's not going to be possible. Uh, the lighting plan, there definitely was concern from the public and the neighbors. That the plan at a, at a bare minimum meets the, uh. There are local regs that talk about, um. Yeah, the night sky and whatnot. So, how do we feel about that, I mean, we don't need to require light poles around the, uh, which certainly would help. And then it gets down to individual houses. Do we, do we, do we want streetlights?
No.
No streetlights? Streetlights, yes, no?
Minimal, maybe, maybe, maybe where we have.
They show light poles.
Maybe somewhat, maybe some on the interior, like where the big parking is over here.
Light poles, how many are there?
Yeah, I'm not really a fan of them peppering light poles everywhere.
No.
No, but at the same time, it's gotta be safe for the residents to walk around there at night.
Yeah, so, then what do you propose, what we used to have downtown, the actual light posts as opposed to the highway ones that it looks like they're proposing? Is that? What do they have?
Like in Narwhata? Or Maya Comet Village or whatever.
Uh, I don't even know what they have there.
Yeah, there's one, two.
Are these light poles here?
No, those are catch bases. That's one. They look, they look like little lights. Two, three.
Why does some of them have a circle around them?
That's not.
No, just.
What are those things? What are the things with the circle and the squares of them?
Those are catch bases.
Catch bases.
Right, that's what I was thinking of.
Under a tree. Got it.
In the big ones?
Oh, I think.
Those are those tree draining things, right?
I'm fine with.
I mean, there are a lot. There, there, I mean, there, there are a fair number of.
I don't think you need light poles where the, where these houses are. Maybe like a couple near the rec center and like a couple over here, like if you have to park and walk to your fourplex or whatever, but it's, it's a rural area. Like there's not light poles on any of the other streets and people get where they need to be.
I agree. I think there's going to be more than enough ambient light from the houses personally. I don't.
I agree.
I'm not sure the developer wanted light poles per se. He probably, they probably were responding to some comment, but.
What about this area where the multifamilies are?
I think, again, you're going to have four entrances to those buildings that are throwing off ambient light. Now, if you wanted to put in pathway lighting.
People can do that individually if they want to. I think it's personal. I don't know.
I just feel like with a big parking area like that, you need to have some.
Yeah, that's for safety purposes?
Yeah.
All right.
Everybody has a flashlight on their phone now.
It's more like when you come home, you're a young woman or man.
You're probably pulling that parking space alone.
Then don't move to a rural area.
Well, this is no longer going to be rural.
But it's, but the rest of it is.
I know. No, I understand. Believe me, I'm not in favor of lighting this thing up. I just sort of feel like that's a big parking lot.
I just feel like, you know, we think.
It's the kids have really changed.
I don't, I don't like light poles and I don't like them.
I, I, what about just half lighting? Low lighting?
Ballards.
Well, you could do ballards.
They don't have to be light poles, but just something that lights up that area a little bit. So when you pull in.
Where did I see ballards recently? Is it here? No.
What's a ballard on?
Yeah, it's about four feet, three feet.
It's like this big and it's lighting the ground more than the sky.
The white elephant on the inside?
I don't know. I feel like they'll get broken and never repaired and then they'll look crappy. Just the more maintenance is the more HOA fees.
I mean, if you're not conditioning it, they can end up, if they need lighting for that, they can put in something. But are you going to, are you going to restrict it?
Well, that's the question. I mean, do we want to restrict what's shown on the, the plan shows? Light poles, I would say every fourth house roughly.
How many homes are in here?
And is this something, once we kind of set the parameters, that it's a final approval? Can we put that in there? Final lighting plan approval? Or do we have to finalize that now?
Yeah, that's, that's a thought, actually.
Are there light posts on Essex Road?
I don't know.
Are there, do you have them on Appleton, Jim?
No.
I mean, it's pretty.
So we have this balance here. You know, especially in this area, they want to preserve the night sky, like Manicat. So, you know.
I'd say there's plenty of ambient light from the houses. I mean, it's, again.
Just go with that.
It's not a rural area when you put.
Yeah, we've got three thousand million, it just.
There's many units in there.
They're all going to have their front lights on or whatever.
For the summer.
I'd be a fan of putting, saying some general parameters and then subjecting it.
I'm not worried about this section of it. I'm only worried about the multifamily section.
I think it's irresponsible to, you know, to put it at development this size and not have any public lighting.
Me too.
I think it's, I think it's really.
This is not a rural area. I mean, this is a rural area, but this is not a rural development.
All right, so.
What do we do with Sajin's path?
I don't know.
I'll look.
All right, so Jim's going to get us the plans. He's going to look into the, the lighting. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll come back to what we're going to, I mean, and, and again, another alternative, instead of light poles, which are probably, I don't know, ten feet tall and.
Yeah, unattractive.
You could put a baller in the downlight.
That's what I'm thinking. And I'm thinking just.
Come up with a spec on that?
Just around the interior of maybe the walking path area and maybe around this larger parking lot.
I hear you. I mean, you want it to be safe.
Does your local regulation for like a night sky regulation talk about parking lots and things?
Probably. There's probably something that's.
I mean, I'm just wondering, can you have it, you know, no, a no streetlight requirement? Because it's sufficiently lit up by the houses on the, on the street and, you know, the parking lot shall meet whatever your ambient sky.
Right.
Bylaw provides.
Because I, I think we're also up against, we can't make them do more than what the planning board will make of.
But it is a very good, it is a very good point. You have a dense, you'd have a densely populated little development. There should be enough ambient lighting from the housing there, except for these parking lots that you don't need street lighting.
But what happens if half the development isn't built or, I don't know, or isn't occupied or?
I still think you're okay. Like, I lived in town for years where I was the only, I was the only person on the street for like, nobody else lived there from after.
You had no streetlights in town?
We had one streetlight.
I have a streetlight at my house.
Beach, beach plum. I know someone who lived there when there were only three houses there, Kim.
Yeah.
And there were no, there was no lighting.
I, I personally live, I hate to say this, I live in a, personally live on a street with two acre zoning and there isn't a street light. And when you walk your dog at night, you take a flashlight.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And, and that's what you do.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, at a, at a bare minimum, it has to meet the town bylaw.
Beth, can I read you?
Sure, of the night sky.
In one oh two point dash three, all residential commercial exterior lighting except floodlights shall be contained in fixtures with an opaque top and translucent sides, partially shielded, such that the bulb is not directly visible from adjacent and neighboring properties or public rights of way.
So it doesn't really speak to subdivision lighting.
Right, does the.
That's house, that's residential lighting.
Industrial area lighting shall be fully shielded and with full cut off, not exceed, just for like twelve feet in height with illumination levels no higher than the average minimum IESNA minimum values. Above public travel journeys. So there, there, it's definitely seems to be addressed. I'm not so sure they.
Do they tell you how much lighting you have to provide in, on, in the planning regulations for parking areas and things like that?
Well, there, there may be, I'm sure there's something in subdivision, I would imagine.
Then I think we should just research it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's, some.
And again, I'm not in favor of lighting the thing up. I just want it to be safe.
Safe is good. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with safe. Okay, so we talked about lighting, landscape, and we talked about. Trees, pool, parking, buffer zone.
Did we, have we talked about water?
Water? Not really. I, I, my note says, not sure what happens with this primarily because, I mean, we don't.
Well, my.
What do you want to ask, I guess?
Well, my, my, you know, I, I guess what we heard from the public is that this is almost a silver bullet issue, depending on how you view it. I don't view it that way, but I, I don't think we really came to a firm conclusion on this.
Okay, well, let's talk about it.
So, you know, we could make it so that they, the water department gets that permit from the state before they get approved. But it sounds like that's not how it's happening on Island.
Well, that would, that would, right. That, that would be something that gets challenged.
Yeah.
You could do it, you could say, you could take the position that unless and until the town gets the, the increase, the approval on the increase.
Yeah, but that's a, this is fine.
It's what's, what's happening right now is the town is operating under the.
Yeah.
Expired permit. And they have, and, and DEP has advised the water department that, you know, they're backlogged or whatever and they're going to get to it. And the water department in the meantime has made submissions to the MAST DEP to show why they're entitled to the increase.
Yeah.
The town is operating under the expired permit.
Um.
What happened?
I was satisfied with the answer from the water department. If we were the water commission, saying that we're operating under this, this guideline and there, the water capacity is sufficient. That's what I heard. And it's just a timing issue where the state is figuring out how to reallocate all this. It's just a matter of time, but it's there.
That's where the controversy came up somewhat about, oh, the, the town, the town isn't in violation about, do they have a permit? Show me the permit.
Right.
And, and what it is, is that they were clearly operating under the expired permit. But not do, not, they're not doing that in a violation type of scenario.
Right.
They, MAST DEP has given them requirements that they have to comply with to get the increase and MAST DEP has not yet granted the expanded.
Yeah, to, to any other municipalities, I think is the answer.
Right.
But that is, that is something we could stipulate. We, as a condition, that permit issue has to be taken care of. You wouldn't necessarily advise it.
I mean, I agree with you. It's, it's something that should be stated. Going back to your point, George, it's, it's of when the application was submitted.
Right.
And in this particular case, it doesn't meet that standard. So let's just state it.
But so, I, you know, I, I think, I agree with you, but if we were acting as the water commission, they're granting permits.
That, that's the sticking point is if, if you go in to get a water permit tomorrow, you would get one.
So.
Not maybe tomorrow, but, or any other developer. So it's, that's the sticking point. This isn't to say.
Treat every other development the same way. One of the basic premises of fortyB is you can't treat a fortyB differently from others. So in order to, if you were going to enforce that, I think you'd, if you went in for a permit for, is there any distinction between applying for a permit for a single family house versus applying for a permit for this development?
Well, but I mean, you could make the argument, and I hear you, you could make the argument, we are the water commissioners for this and we don't agree with the fact that they're issuing permits. Other, other water commissioners.
Yeah, but that's, that would still be treated as an unequal type of argument. But you can, you know, you, you could, you can, it, it's, it's more than just your si- single family house.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, there's a legitimate concern raised about, well, you don't have the increase yet.
How long does, yeah, how many, how long does it take the water commission to issue a hundred permits?
Well, they're about to do it for Richmond.
I mean, the, and you also have to go on the.
But that was already calculated.
Before you, so, you know.
Well, you said they have adequate pumping capacity. He hasn't said that we have, you know, I mean, everybody admits that the permit has expired. And he's admitted that they exceed the pumping. Now, he's also said through conservation, as I remember it, through conservation measures and whatnot, they could get down below or, or in, for lack of a better word, compliance, but they seemingly choose not to do that.
I also think it's informative that they have submitted all the information to the state. And the state, they're not in, they, there's not in a violation or there's, the, the state is well aware of it and is allowing the town to continue.
And that's, that's why I said, that's where the confusion came up about, well, where's the permit? The permit's clearly expired, the existing capacity, but they're not in a violation situation. They, they made the submission. They're waiting on, on the action.
In other words, the state hasn't come down and said, you're in violation.
Right. No Sajin exists. The state is well aware of what water being used and what's going on.
If we were truly overproducing, no, our permit, that would be a local concern.
Right.
But since we're operating in this mode, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, and the other issue that's come in is that, you know, again, you have to go on what's submitted on, on the record, you know, on what you're doing. And, and so, I mean, the water department has weighed in on it. I mean, basically, he thinks that there is capacity for.
Do we require the, the DEP weigh in on it? I mean, do we require?
Well, you can make, you can, you cannot delay your permitting decision waiting on that, but you could make it subject to.
Yeah, make the developer, you know, get some sort of sign off from the.
Approval.
That, that, that would work for me.
And it would probably, it would also, I would imagine, give the neighbors some sense of, the, the public some sense of closure.
I'm sure you can couch it. I mean, technically, we're in some, some, some violation and we just, we're just not comfortable permitting that kind of connection.
Oh, no, I think it's, no, it's a very legitimate point that's been raised by the abutters is that, I, I don't mean to say the abutters, the project opponents.
Right.
It's been a, it's been a very legitimate issue because, you know, there, there's, this is also part of, of why there was a little bit of controversy when the water department was weighing in. And I was trying to prevent some type of perception being that the town is in violation. Really clearly, this is something that's frustrating on the town's part with the state, that they're behind on everything. They're not, they're going on different assessments that aren't really accurate for local conditions. And it's, it's frustrating from the water department's standpoint of how MAST DEP is acting on this, leaving the town with uncertainty.
Yeah.
You know, so, so it's definitely a, a legitimate point to, to make is that, well, because MAST DEP is behind, why should we, you know, take a lax approach to this? Why don't we want to apply, you know, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is with respect to requirements?
Sure.
But I think you'd be doing that if we put in, you know, the condition, you know, as to being subject to the, to the, you know, MAST DEP approval of that expanded capacity.
I, I, that, that works for me. I think it works.
Does that?
Yeah, for sure, because even though we, we know that the, we're operating this way, we still don't know what the number is.
Correct.
So, you know, it could very well be below, or there's a, there's an exposure there. So I'm, I'd be all for this option. The other, the other thing, you know, that occurred to me when we reviewed this was they could still drill their own well.
Correct.
Which maybe we require them to do, which might, that means they got to offer up more space, but.
We, we, we had this discussion. If you drill a well and if it serves, I think, more than twenty-four bedrooms, it's considered a public water supply, in which case you have a huge one requirement.
Exactly.
Which eats up, I did the calculation. It's a, it's a big number.
That's the alternative.
You could do, you could put that condition in, but I will assure you, there'll be a disparate treatment argument.
Okay.
That's raised.
Yeah, and also, yeah, a little less.
And, and you'll, you'll lose that.
I, you know, that's the thing is that you, you have to, you know, this has been a long process and, he, you know, certain opponents have really put in their heart and soul in it and raised legitimate issues. But you, you also have to be, you know, you're the board with the jurisdiction, so you, you have to really, you know, figure out a way of, of, of dealing with the legitimate opposition and, but then the reality of what your jurisdiction and obligations and duties are under fortyB. So I, I think maybe, why don't we take a crack at, you know, conditions related to the water proposal? Put it in a draft decision and you can talk.
Let's do that. And we're not obviously making any ultimate determination in that, at that, in that regard to the permit status.
Yeah, no, I just brought it up.
Yeah, no, it's a great point.
It's extremely troubling because I've been outside of your meetings, I've been at select board meetings where Mark will, will, will talk about the situation with MAST DEP. And it's very troubling because you're left in a state of limbo.
Yeah.
Really, you know, and, and that, that is, that's, that's really problematic. And you're, you're just kind of being thrust into the, to the limelight of it, you know, with a, with a very, with a very, very big development. So you're kind of, you've been, you've been really stuck with this situation that the state has really imposed on the town and county. So.
It does seem a little odd that permits continue to be issued because if they all of a sudden stopped issuing permits, there might be more pressure on the state to get your act together. All of a sudden, everybody and their mother is, is applying political pressure to get this done, but anyway.
The lieutenant governor isn't pushing on this.
It doesn't seem, it seems crazy to me, but I think that if, if we can get a condition that's in there that's reasonable, that you. that you have to go, the D E P issue has to be cleared out. I think.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, because there's definitely the capacity, is what Mark said.
And we don't want to be responsible.
What's that?
What, what do you mean by cleared up?
Right, I'll, I'll.
Well, I'm gonna let George work on that. That was bad language on my part.
Cleared up, he doesn't mean you can delay, uh, your permitting.
No, 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 this would be not at all.
Yes.
Not we're gonna delay, it's we're going to.
Yes.
Put it in there and, okay. Okay, so that was water. Um, in, in terms of the water, we, do we need to get in? We never got any real data about the infrastructure that the developer was putting in as to its, um, its adequacy in terms of pressure or.
It's not gonna.
Fire suppression, uh, et cetera.
Was he gonna weigh in on that as well?
Yeah, I thought that was part of the.
Part of his discussion.
The fire.
Fire department.
But don't you have a condition that says that must, must be subject to the approval of the fire department?
Well, I, that, that's my point. We don't have it, we don't have the data or the info, so we can't ensure that. So there would have to be a condition that it's not only gonna meet that, but that it's vetted by, yes, the fire chief, and/or I would assume the town engineer would be vetting the ultimate engineering plans that show connections and.
Yeah, I don't think that's unusual in forty B's. I see that all the.
Okay. That's what I figured.
Yeah.
Um, fire suppression of the fourplexes, we don't have to get into that, but that's, that's a building code.
I have to have sprinklers.
Okay.
So because we don't have a definitive, you know, plans and profiles and things like that as part of this package, that will all get created and that will, that will be given.
Yes.
Another opportunity, say, for Mark Willett to look at and say.
I mean, and that, that's totally normal.
Remember, technically forty Bs are based upon preliminary information. Once the comprehensive permit is granted, and assume there's no appeal, then the applicant has to submit a final approval submission to the subsidizing agency, and also has to submit a full set of building permit plans to the building department. Whatever is normally required by the building department, they have to submit that. And that's when the detailed drawings will be done.
Right. Okay, so, things on my list, um, we talked about a lot of them.
What about staging?
No, that was, yeah, it was a good one. Um, and, and construction in general, uh.
Phasing.
He did address that one thing.
Yeah. Well, things, not really, I.
It was lightly touched upon.
What it was also.
You know, the reason I bring this up, we go back to Beach Palm, and, you know, that entire site was cleared. Every single tree on it, and it sat vacant for, oh, mostly vacant for six or seven years. It looked, it was just awful.
I don't disagree. I didn't, I don't know that as a fact, but Jeff, when, when that happened, did he, did he, did, is it normal that someone would go in and at least seed the area to, for dust control and whatnot?
See, I mean, they should, it should be, at a minimum, it should be seeded. I, I think my point is, you know, if, if they need to maybe come up with some sort of a, some sort of a staging and pha- phasing plan themselves, I mean, we need to allow them to construct roads, the utilities, the drainage, you know, the infrastructure. If they're gonna start into the condo areas, then clear that.
Right.
But before, you know.
Well, is it, is it reasonable to say, um, because they're not gonna come up with that for us. We're beyond that. So is it reasonable for us to say, uh, fa- we want, and I'm, I'm just putting this out there, we want to see all the roads, you know, not, not, not to the nth degree, but the, the preliminary roads, infrastructure in place before any lots are cleared. And then you clear the lots as you get a bit of building permit.
You did that for Sages.
I would like to do that, yeah.
Right, we did it at Sages.
Yeah, it was much, much better at Sages' path than it was at.
They cleared the lots as they went, pretty much.
And are we releasing these lots in a, they, didn't they have to come to us to release lots for construction at Sages?
They did, and it was a little awkward, uh, um, but I definitely think that there should be some safeguard, whether it's through us or the town's engineer or, or whatnot, but, um, and whoever gets that lucky job cannot be pressured on a daily basis to come down and sign something because they want a, a, a building permit. It has to be done in a, a reasonable fashion, so. I, yeah, I think we need something in there.
And that's not unusual. All forty Bs I've worked from, and I don't know how George drafts his decisions, but very often, you'll say prior to the issuance of a building permit, the following conditions have to be satisfied. One, a construction, a, a phasing plan and construction management plan has to be presented for review by the, the board or its designated representative. Because you really don't know. They said they were gonna build the condos, then, then it changes. You don't know until you know what the market is and what the final outcome is. So you deal with that.
Right.
All right, so they can't get a building permit until the phasing plan is, uh.
Is submitted and reviewed and approved.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to approve, uh, uh, review and approve that?
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody does.
I think we should.
Yeah, no, I know somebody does. Does it want to be us or the town engineer, or?
I would say town engineer.
Really?
He could present to you.
I, 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 I think it should be collaborative.
I think the, the safe way is Z B A or its designated agent.
I designated.
If you want to do it, you can do it. If you want to designate it, you can designate it.
Yeah, I like that.
But, but the fact that nobody should clear cut a site. That's not any, it's a normal condition here.
If I may, with Sages', we, we work very well, and we had Mr. Pesci here yesterday to that effect. We had all built into the comp permit, very specific, I can send that to you, George, so you can see. Parameters in terms of infrastructure installation, uh, what was gonna happen between phase one and phase two, clearing was very.
It was all written, it was all done though prior to the issuance of the permit. It was in, you know, that was during the permitting process, I remember.
And so Pesci and I would go to pre-construction meetings, during construction meetings on a regular basis. He was on a, like, almost weekly basis checking in. Um, he would come and give you, you know, updates and reports. So he could deliver, so he could vet the plan, come say to you, I vetted it, it works good with it. It'd be subject to that, sort of a condition that the town engineer will approve the phasing and so forth plan.
At Sages', though, you had something to deal with from the get-go. Here, we don't have anything. There was something, something. I remember it's part of the bidding process. It was all very clear.
We had, we had talked about the phases.
What got cleared when.
Right. Because they were doing it in, well, they were doing it specifically in two phases. Didn't they do the phase one roadways first, and then did the phase two roadways?
And the board had real concerns about protecting the safety of residents who were living there.
Right.
It was fencing, you know.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Which is a concern here.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, so, yeah, I guess we'll, we'll wait to see the phasing plan or designate, designate and go that route. I do think that.
You're okay with that?
Up with conditions, I think. And you should specifically mention, you know, protect, maintaining the, the safety of, uh, residents who are already living on site.
So, related to that, um, I have concerns about the homeowners association and that whole structure. I've, I've been involved personally with drafting these H O A documents, and my concern is that I want to make sure that the developers is responsible for all the other expenses while they're developing this, because what could happen is, say, the market does crash, one building's built, who, you know, they need to pay their percentage of the expenses and not leave it to the people that are there, if that makes sense.
That's pretty common, though. Doesn't, I mean, doesn't developer, I mean, they maintain control of that association until they.
Right, until the end.
Well, we just want to make sure. We just want to make sure.
Well, no, I'm, I think sometimes it's not till the end. You could make, you're, once it's fifty-one percent owned by all, all the others. I think in the past, I, we've.
So you want to make sure that you're dealing with the applicant adopt the homeowner.
Definitely.
And I, I bring this up just because maybe this would need to be reviewed.
Sure.
At the same time, at the phasing plan, that's all.
Well, I don't think it's a, we don't leave it up to the homeowners. That, 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 that would be a condition.
Or to make sure the developer is.
Is on the hook. Now, the, the flip side of that argument is when there are seventy-five percent is, is complete, and the homeowners are a strong group, and they want to do something, and the, uh, the developer doesn't. Because that, I think, there was a little tug and pull elsewhere, pull and tug.
Yeah, I think that's.
But that's, that's normal, yeah. So, I would think we want the developer in there to the bitter end.
You know, here, here's an example, Jeff. You, uh, they go ahead and build the amenities first, build a unit, and then things go south.
Right.
So they should be responsible for their, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of maintaining that pool and not walking away. Somehow structure it so that who's ever living there is responsible for it, that's all.
And I'm particularly concerned about how costs are gonna be allocated so that the number that's determined to be the maximum allowable sales price for the affordable units is realistic in terms of what those H O A and condo fees will be.
Yeah, because you could have a disproportionate share of, uh, but, um, of those units in a certain phase that are, there's more of them at that point.
It's very complicated. I just want to make sure it's a reasonable number. In fact, given the huge gap between the sales prices for the market rate cottages versus the affordable cottages, and given that condo fees can be based upon the percentage, the percentage of beneficial interest is based upon market value, the condo fees for the affordable units is normally very low. Uh, we just want to make sure that the numbers that are used to set those are realistic.
Speaking of sort of the whole prorata thing, um, it would be the same deal here as, as in the past. You cannot get, you, you only get a building permit for market rate units as you build the affordable.
Right.
Three to one.
So the interesting thing is on, for instance, the fourplex.
One unit has to be.
The fourplex is great.
And it has one, one of those, yeah, never mind. I was thinking bedrooms, never mind. Okay.
What about, what about the duplexes, then? You just have to build.
The duplexes, you would have to build two at once.
So, yeah, so every other duplex has to have one affordable?
Well, no, you, you.
But you could have two that has.
Well, you, you build the first one with.
Before you get, well.
Three, two and three, uh, three and four.
Because the duplex is gonna be a single permit.
Well, you, no, you would get one duplex that would have affordable and market. That has to be finished. Then you get the other one. You don't get two at once. See?
Yep, I understand.
Yeah. Um, and, and back to prorata, prorata, the, the, the unit numbers obviously have to be prorata. The bedrooms have to be prorata, and, uh, I don't think we have to, well, the square footage of the units have to be prorata.
So you're saying the bedroom numbers, twenty-five percent of the bedrooms that are built have to be affordable?
Yeah. Otherwise, you could have every affordable unit, or, or, let's say, for Ethan Math, he didn't.
Oh, you're right.
You know, would have all be studios.
Exactly.
Right, and I think, Eleanor, you did a really good job managing that first, was it for Beach Palm, right? With all this big spreadsheet with all the colors, and you, I mean, I.
I don't remember that.
You don't remember it? Oh, my gosh.
No, I remember the colors. I don't remember the content. Uh, okay, so that, I mean, we've talked about that from the get-go, so I think that's a reasonable condition.
Yeah.
That, uh, uh, the water we talked about, construction, I, as part of the whole construction plan, I think dust control is a major issue, uh, in, in the neighborhood. So that's gotta be part of the plan.
It could be part of that same.
The construction management plan, and this is a big project, needs to be very detailed. Uh, I would assume they would fence the entirety of the, the project.
I would think they should, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, noise control is another big one. We talked about it.
Town bylaw?
The town bylaw is fairly, uh.
It's pretty liberal.
It's pretty liberal.
I think you actually addressed that on.
We did, and I think we were seven to seven, Monday through Saturday.
I just saw that.
No, seven, seven to seven, Monday through Friday, seven to one on, uh.
I have it here.
Saturday, no Sundays, or holidays.
Is it seven, or is it seven, the, the town bylaw is seven thirty?
Okay, we said hours.
Seven thirty?
We said hours on Saturday, seven to one, Sunday and legal holidays, no work.
Seven thirty, let's change it to seven thirty.
Seven thirty, seven thirty to one on Saturday, Sundays and legal holidays, no work, Monday through Friday, seven to seven.
Seven thirty to seven, then.
Seven thirty to seven, sorry. And then a silk fence the entire.
So, so, you said you're changing Monday to Friday, seven thirty to seven?
No, that's just Saturday, to go with the bylaw.
Oh.
What did you say for Monday to Friday? Before you said seven to seven.
I did.
I did. I thought you were, wanted to change it to seven thirty.
I don't, I don't, I, I.
What's the town bylaws?
Whatever, whatever the town bylaws.
The, the seven thirty kicks in in the summer, there's a summer, but don't, don't quote me, I gotta look it up.
Okay. So it's either seven or seven thirty.
Well, we just say seven thirty.
Seven thirty's good. Who wants to work before seven thirty?
They should be able to work Monday morning. I don't want anybody banging pots at seven o'clock in the morning.
All right, uh, while, while we're looking that up, a couple other things, looking at John Chessy's report, uh, he's suggesting a dense two and a half inch binder co-, um, it says cost, that's not the right, uh, code, due to construction. Does that seem to make sense to you from your experience?
It should be two and a half and one and a half, four inches of total asphalt.
Right, but not two and two.
No, yeah, that's fine, two and a half and one and a half, yep. A thicker binder is good, it holds up.
Right, because there's gonna be construction equipment rolling down those roads forever.
Yep, absolutely, makes good sense.
Uh, and again, that would come under the os- the inspection auspices of, of the town engineer. And if that breaks down over the life of, I don't know how well the rugged Scott roads held up, but it was a long project, but I assume they were fine, but, uh. Uh, another suggestion, again, as part of the, uh, management plan, was a comprehensive sediment and erosion control plan, consistent with EPA, S W P P requirements and D E P stormwater handbook. Uh, there is a little slope to that property, and it, it's critical that once, once any excavation or clearing is done, that the water is contained on that site.
Then they should put up some sort of a fence with a, no, fence with a silk fence attached to it.
But that's a requirement of pri- as, as part of the building permit application, they have to submit that plan.
Well, I know, but I just want to be specific that, I mean, they can submit a plan without those, without those components, and if someone approves it, we're the sort of the ones with the egg on the face, is what I'm saying.
In terms of this list of what has to be submitted with the building permit application, you're gonna have the erosion control.
No, I know, I, but you, so what you're saying is we don't have to, we don't have to go through all that. We're just taking it, somebody else will, will.
Well, you could, I think you could say for approval by the board or its designated agent.
Yeah, ultimately, it would be that way.
On this, on this.
Yeah, we make a statement that it wasn't.
Very often, I'll, I'll have.
It's gonna show a silk fence border around the entire property.
Very often, it would be.
It's gonna show silk bags on all the adjacent catch bases to keep any runoff, you know, any dirty runoff will be treated.
And we didn't get any kind of an erosion control plan?
No, well.
Because normally you would get it, at this point, you normally would have had that, and it would have been.
Right, so do we make the statement? Well, this is my point. I just want to make somebody looking over our shoulder, because I don't want to be the one who's explaining to somebody, hey, the water's running into my property because you guys didn't pay attention, so.
Well, I think you're gonna have that, and then you're gonna have a condition in this that the, the applicant is responsible payment of sort of peer, ongoing peer review fees for.
Okay, I like that.
Anything that, you know, the town itself does not normally do.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, the, I, believe me, I didn't come up with this idea, the comprehensive, I don't sit around thinking about comprehensive sediment, but.
A developer would have to do that.
Yes.
I know that, I, I know that they're supposed to do that, but things sometimes slip to the cracks.
No, no, get it and write it.
That's all I'm saying, is that I, I would like to even take some time to go through John. That's all I'm saying, is that I, I would like to even take some time to go through John's, Chessy's letter, uh, report, we can either do it now or next time or, or whatever, just making sure that anything that we think is, needs extra emphasis is in there. Or you, cause you can't really reference that, can you?
No, all his conditions are gonna be put into your decision.
Right.
Into my draft that goes to you.
Right. So anything, cause again, he's the one, I didn't, he, he came up with this notion of it. So you'll pull all that out of his report?
Correct.
So we don't have to go through it?
Yeah, I mean, there are other recommended conditions elsewhere, not just Chessy, but there is also stuff on water.
Yeah.
From your water, not, not Mark, but the water hydrologist.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, there is a lot of conditions that were recommended to you from various-
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Those will all be in your decision.
They will, so we don't necessarily have to, have to, uh, go through them point by point in this deliberation.
No.
Okay.
Some boards take the easy way out and just reference the letter. George is gonna do it the right way, which is to go through those letters and extract
Okay.
the, the information that should be listed as a condition, so that it's in that one comprehensive permit. Cause nobody goes and looks at the letters.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So it sounds, that sounds good to me. Then we don't have to go through John Chessy's, uh, report, it's all gonna be in there. The mass heritage thing, uh, natural heritage thing, we already talked about, um, so I guess the, the only thing sort of that I think is outstanding is if we, uh, well, we-
HGC stuff?
The HGC's a biggie, I guess. Do we wanna start that? Or, uh, I think we've gone through all the waivers, do, or do we wanna take one final pass at those?
It's, it's not the time right now to start anything new. Respectfully, um-
You wanna leave?
No, I don't want to leave. I don't want to leave, but, um, you know, if you're gonna run out of gas at six-ten, he and I might as well make the six-fifteen vote.
I got you.
As opposed to if you have plenty of gas to go for two more hours, we'll take the layer vote.
No, you already ate all the dark chocolates. I'm, I, I, I was willing to go to seven, but, uh-
I'm willing to go to seven, but I, I think, I agree, starting, I think if we start HGC and go through it, I think we're gonna end up re-talking about it because I do feel like running out.
Should we just run through the waivers quickly?
Okay, cause I don't, I, I think the HGC, without the bigger buildings to discuss, we, we've gone over the, the, the single-family dwellings and they made a lot of the changes that we talked about. I'm happy to postpone it, uh, but we, you know, we do have, uh, time on it.
Yeah, great.
For the, for the waivers, I intended, cause you, you touched on them a little bit, um, I intended to go through those also. Eleanor is quite expert on some of your provisions. And I was gonna go through those and put in the list of granted waivers and why in your draft decision.
So maybe do those next time.
If you wanna discuss that in that context, I was planning on addressing the waivers in your draft decision. Cause that, that really, the waivers really, and most of these permit decisions are really, are the whole thing, uh, really, so.
Okay.
So if we get rid of the, all the multifamilies-
Yeah.
And the community building.
Well, let, let's just talk for a second, if these guys wanna, so what time's the boat?
Six fifteen.
Right. So we, we would, twenty minutes?
Have we scheduled the next meeting yet?
No.
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we do that first?
That usually takes us at least twenty minutes.
Well, that was why we raised the issue.
I have all the dates.
I have the dates too.
Well, there's one thing, I just emailed Maria before she left. One change in the decision.
What's the change?
Uh, Thursday May is no longer affordable.
Okay.
All right, I, uh, won't be here next week, except for Monday. Well, that's not true Tuesday, but not, not late in the afternoon. So, I, I've lost the list of, uh-
Right, I have it right here.
What's our, what's our end date again?
June tenth?
June tenth? So that's why I would sort of like to, I, I hate to ask, but I mean, do you guys mind taking the next boat after the six fifteen? When is that?
Uh, sure, we can do that.
Well, I, no, we were-
I will be in much better condition if I get on that six fifteen boat.
Okay, fair enough, that's fair.
That's fair.
So you're gone, next week you're gone, starting-
I'm, on the, on the fourteenth to the seventeenth.
I had, why did I have the thirteenth at two written in my book? Maybe I was supposed to write it on Friday.
Come on Monday, I'd love it here, I'd love seeing Kiram.
Monday, this coming Monday?
Yeah, let's, yeah, that's, when do you come back, um, Ed?
I come back on, on Monday.
The twentieth. The twenty-third, we, we can't do.
I'm gone, no, I could do it late afternoon, Monday, Monday the twentieth is, or Tuesday's fine.
The twentieth is, um, uh, impossible for me cause I'm on the SBPF.
Okay.
Which the select board is requiring.
You're suggesting the fourteenth?
No, he's gone.
I would do the fourteenth, I don't really wanna do-
I'm not gonna be here.
Oh, I thought in the morning you were gonna be here.
I'll be here in the morning.
Where are you going? I love the morning, it's good.
It's my birthday and I'm going elsewhere.
Oh, it's my birthday.
It's my birthday, I'll cry if I want to. Oh, you're gonna cry, you're gonna cry. Something like that.
Uh, what about the?
What about Tuesday the twenty-first? I'm not here, I'm not here from the seventeenth to the first week of June.
What?
Hey. For this.
Well, we better do it next Tuesday morning.
It's not, there's no availability.
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday's only available twelve to four, so it's Monday, the thirteenth is available nine.
Can you guys do Monday?
I cannot.
That's the SBF day.
The thirteenth?
I'm not gonna have a draft decision to you by Monday.
Monday, oh yeah, that would be crazy.
Come on, George, I thought you were gonna do that tonight.
Hey, you got all weekend.
Right, whatever.
All right, well then, it's, it's the third.
So the third?
You back by then? No, when are you back? Whatever the first week after the first week of June, so.
Oh, the tenth?
You're, you're back the day that we have to sign the decision. Is that right?
He can miss a session too if he, you know-
I already missed one.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Do, do members have to be in the deliberation session to vote?
No, I don't think so. No, that, that, but Mullen had to do with the public hearing, correct?
Okay, so I'll write my vote on a piece of paper, nobody open it until we die.
No, you would need, no, I, you, you absolutely should be back for a, a session of the deliberations, like, so that you can, you could weigh in on something like that the board discussed on the draft decision that you didn't address.
So we should definitely, what's available on the-
I would recommend not having, you know, taking Kiram out of the whole process.
No, I'm not advocating that either.
But he could miss a deliberation session and be here for the next one.
And what day do we have to sign the permit?
The midnight on the tenth, I thought.
The week after Monday the third, so.
So Kiram isn't back until the tenth?
In the clerk's office, right, ten, on the tenth.
Oh, on the tenth?
Yeah.
So we don't have till midnight on the tenth?
So Kiram, you're gone from when to when?
I'm looking right now, so that would be, most likely till June seventh is what I'm looking at.
And you're starting off when?
The seventeenth.
But he can't tie in. The thing is, the June, June seventh would work, it, because by then, you would assume you're gonna have deliberations on a draft decision and any other ancillary things you wanna address. Then you'd have a, a session, final session, Kiram could weigh in on anything that he missed in the meantime, do any final tweaks to the decision and you, you could actually have a session where you vote on a decision, on the seventh. And then you could have that filed easily with the town clerk on the fall of Monday.
Meet him Monday the third and, and do the, essentially final draft sign.
Well, we could, we could meet-
When could you have your draft done, George?
Are you back the seventh, Kiram? Can you be?
That's what, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, so what time is the room available on the seventh?
It's all day on the seventh, on the beauty room and all day on, from nine to six on Thursday.
So we need to schedule something on the seventh and then we wanna do something before that.
Yeah, let's do something on the seventh and get that done and then we'll look at what could happen before that.
That's three, we've got three weeks.
So, sorry, so George, when, when Ed asks, what, what, when do you think you might have a draft decision?
Uh, if you, well, I can't be here Monday or Tuesday of next week.
What about the week of the twentieth?
Uh, the week of the twentieth is better, but I have SBPF on Monday.
How about Tuesday?
How about Friday? We, we don't, do we not like Fridays all of a sudden?
Friday.
Well, you don't love Fridays.
That's Memorial Day weekend.
Friday, the twenty-fourth is more-
Memorial Day, you probably don't wanna-
They're not gonna be here Friday.
I can't be here on Friday, no way.
All right. Sorry.
Okay, then what day?
It'll have to be the twenty-second, Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, no, you're not back till-
Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
On the Monday, would you be meeting at one PM?
No, we could meet, well, yeah, well, I guess one-
Because I could easily do that and make the SBPF here.
Yeah, we're times the SBF, yeah.
Four. I, I'm on four.
You wanna do it?
What, what day is that?
The twentieth?
That's the twentieth.
Twentieth.
Yeah, I have a meeting at six that night for the town.
And what's your availability on Monday?
I'm available.
And you're back, Ed, on the twentieth?
Let's do it Monday the twentieth or Monday? Monday the twentieth.
Monday the twentieth.
Monday the twentieth.
At, at twelve o'clock?
Twelve o'clock is a four hours, and then you go right to the, yeah?
So do I need to do anything or just sit back and catch the minutes?
You will, the owner will, you know, provide you with the draft decision by email. Plus, you can watch, you can, you-
You can watch the video.
Oh, no, I won't, I won't be doing that.
After the fact.
We can text you the highlights.
I watched the other night the concom, but the audio was the selectmen.
That's amazing.
Um, then what do we meet on the seventh?
Wait, are we on the twentieth now?
Yeah, let's do the twentieth at twelve o'clock.
Twenty at noon, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, repeat that, I'm sorry.
Twentieth, twelve o'clock.
Okay, I have the room right now, so.
George, can I, can I just ask about that date before we move on? Uh, will you get us the draft decision a few days before that so that we get to look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, um, uh, yes.
Will we do another in between then, or is that, that'll be sufficient?
Maybe we should plan one and then not do it if we don't need it.
By next week, by, uh,
I mean, by Friday, is that good?
Oh, by Friday, yeah, yes, for sure.
Look at it over the weekend?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm-
Friday, yeah, perfect, I'll get it to you by noon time on Friday.
Friday the eighteenth.
What time do you wanna meet on the twentieth?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock. All right, so just in case, do, uh, the, the thought would be to meet, at least schedule another meeting bef-, between then and the seventh, I think it makes sense.
I need to book a room just in case.
Yeah, we need to book a room.
So why don't we book one maybe for the third?
Well, well, you gotta give George time to turn it around too, if, if there's, uh-
Well, the twentieth to the third.
No, no, June, June third.
Well, third to the seventh, then we're gonna meet on the seventh to vote?
Well, then Friday the thirty-first.
So you have two weeks, so Monday the twentieth and Monday the third, June-
Ah, fine, Monday the third, I don't care.
You, you can also, oh, cause you're looking to reserve the room, I was just gonna say, well, all right.
Let's reserve the room, if we don't use it, we don't use it.
All right.
Let's do the thirty-first.
Let's sign.
Friday, no one wanted to do Friday.
I thought it was only Memorial Day Friday.
Ah, Jeff.
I don't mind you.
You okay?
Sure.
Friday the thirty-first, all right.
That, that's like ten days from the- Well, we can do another day. I was just trying to get ten days away from-
Huh? Is Thursday a possibility?
Thursday, uh-
No, no, the room's not open.
I guess I'd be-
On the thirtieth. Oh, that's my birthday, I don't wanna sit here. On the thirtieth.
Wait, forty-five?
You're so mean.
He's turning seventy-five, so.
I look good for seventy-five, right? All right, the thirty-first, right? One o'clock? We good?
Let me just make sure it's available.
Where do you go?
It says all day on this, but-
I know, but there's-
They change, yeah. You don't wanna do two, huh?
Two is fine, I don't, two is fine, two is fine.
I'd rather do two, just gives you time to like get to one, have some lunch.
So what time did you wanna do thirty, thirty first?
Two o'clock, Monday, I mean, uh, what date was that?
Thirty-first.
If we don't use it, we don't use it.
Right, and then the last one is the seventh at, do you wanna do two o'clock again?
Sure.
Okay, I will not be at that one, but you should be done by that point.
Because we're, we're just signing the decision theoretically.
On Monday.
Right, I mean, the Sunday is pretty much-
If, if there are any questions, I'll speak with the chair. If, if I have any comments, I'll speak with the chair.
GPM that day? Yeah.
Yeah.
It was on the third, right?
Oh my God.
I'm gonna feel like I have-
It's on the seventh.
The seventh we've already decided on. The thirty-first-
You should be signing the decision on the seventh.
Wait, the seventh we're saying, what time are we saying?
Seventeen.
You also wanted to give Kiram a chance to weigh in and not-
The twentieth, Jeff, at, at noon.
Yeah.
Twentieth at noon, the thirty-first at two and the seventh at two.
Okay, right, right. Twentieth, the thirty-first and the seventh.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get it done.
The seventh at two.
Well, you'll, uh, send us an email.
Yeah, send me an email, cause I didn't get all that in there, but.
Well, you're, today you're continuing to, at least to Monday the twentieth, you know?
Oh, yeah, I got that. Okay. Monday the twentieth, that's the noon. Okay.
Twentieth, thirty-first and the seventh.
Yeah.
Correct.
And you'll get us the draft by, uh, do you need any sort of, uh, affirmative consensus or you're good?
No.
Uh, okay, I don't think we need to, well, we're not gonna start in the mail. So, uh, well, let me ask you two while we still have five minutes, is there anything we're not, we haven't covered yet that you think we should, other than the HGC to, to a degree and, uh, I think we've hit most of the highlights, but-
Well, I think we could look at George's draft decision.
Yeah, no, definitely will.
And that'll give us, you know, that'll give us, you know, that will tell us a lot. It'll open up a lot of questions, I'm sure.
Will you also email us, you emailed them to me, I think, uh, but would you send them to everybody, the, just as examples? If anybody thinks this is useful, the rugged Scott and Saichim's path? Send it to everybody? You might as, might read those, at least the conditions, just as, uh, might trigger something.[1715.52]